We have a meeting for Monday, November 24th, 2014. The first item on our agendas is Two Sharp Street Site Plan Review and an update. And could I ask the applicant to identify yourself and present?
Good evening. Carl Erb from the Christopher Brothers Development. Here to give you an update on the Two Sharp Street, Unit 2C project. Since your site plan review got in May 2014. Can you speak into the mic just a second? We had our kickoff meeting with conservation. The site has been cleared. Erosion control is placed around the perimeter of the project. Most of the grading done inside that. We'll start to do the drainage work and have another inspection with the Conservation Administrator, Abby. We just received the building permit filed for this. I think in the packet that you have, it notes that it was filed but still pending. As part of your site plan review, there were a couple of conditions that were open that the Board wanted to have an update or just better understand. And we'll address those again in the spring when we're wrapping up construction. But the two issues were some directional signage for the project as you enter in. I think the concern being traveling this way, whether or not a truck could make the hard turn and would actually prefer to go up the opposite side of the building. You know, coming in this way, you're likely to not have an issue to get along the right side of the building. We're proposing to have a sign similar to what was put in your packet, you know, letting the drivers know that the deliveries are to the rear and that they can use either direction for travel onsite. We may work with the wording a little bit as we get to the end, but the idea is that they can travel up either side of the site. The other issue was the rear of the property is a dense graded gravel that'll be, it's paved coming up to the ends. And there was a question about whether or not trucks turning around might cause some ruts or some erosion there. There's a product out there, gravel paver. It's a honeycomb style product that we've put down at the turning radiuses at both ends. Comes in four foot by 150 foot rolls. We'd likely put, you know, a series of rolls, a series of runs at each side, you know, that would cover most of the turning radius, you know. It looks similar to this, just a little closer together, you know, so as any truck coming in, turning, you know, wouldn't be causing a rut over a series of time. But the dense graded compacted materials should be hold up well. It's similar to what is down the street. There's another industrial type unit there. Those are the two items. We just received the building permit, so as construction proceeds and as we get closer to completion in the spring, certainly can come back to the Board and give you a final update on the product that was placed down and the signage if it should change at all.
I just had a question on the gravel grid product that you're looking at. Is that an H-20 loading? I was just, uh, I don't have to heavy trucks yet.
Yeah. And it's designed for fire lanes and parking lots.
And it's pretty stable when you plow and things like that?
They do recommend that you raise the blade up an inch to two inches, you know, so that you're not pressing down as hard as you would on the pavement. But that's in part of the operation in the guidance documents that come with the product.
And in terms of the signage on that end of the parking area where it goes from hard pave to the gravel, will there be an indicator or something so that people plowing will know that?
We could do that. This is one of the snow areas, you know, and maybe there could be signs placed up similar to where they put the snow stakes, certainly in their best interest to advise their plow contractor to be aware of that so they're not repairing it in the spring.
Carl, do you expect deliveries to be coming at the same time that other people are coming in and out of the site?
No, I mean, it's a small, I mean, this is four small workshop areas of 1,200 square feet each, you know. These ones are access as a 10-foot door here, you know, so they would just, you know, I would think more of a box truck or maybe a Home Depot type, you know, quick unload. These two units do have a 12-foot opening at the back, but my, not likely that, you know, there'd be all four getting deliveries at the same time.
Okay. Because when I, I mean, I, it's hard for me to visualize the reverse flow, how it works in terms of, you know, conflict, but is there enough room for the truck driver to come in?
Yeah, these are 24-foot wide travel lanes.
Yeah.
So, I mean, they could almost, you know, pass each other.
Right, but as they're coming in, that's what I'm worried about.
Oh, I see.
And going the opposite way. Is there enough room for them to be lined up and really looking before they go the reverse way as they're coming into the site?
Yeah, that's a good point. Or it's a sign coming down saying caution, trucks, you know, coming in that way.
Yes, yeah.
I could, we could look into something like that, more so for those that are exiting the site.
Right, just contrary. I mean, if you see the truck, you're thinking it's gonna come out, it's not gonna go, you know, shoot across the lane of traffic and go exit out the opposite way.
Exactly.
So maybe, yeah, signs for the, for cars and others.
Jimmy thought this meant put your vehicle in reverse.
Yeah.
Good comments before I come here tonight, that, so, but I like that idea, perhaps something as you're more so exiting caution for...
Exactly. That's where the conflict will be, cars exiting and not realizing the trucks might, yeah, that would be good.
Yep.
Would you consider some striping as you come in and make the first turns to dotted striping or something that where they would know intuitively?
Painting for the stop and that.
That's good coming out, but I'm just thinking as you make the first turn closer to the building, does it make sense to put something in there that would show them graphically as they're coming in? The sign tells them, I suppose, but...
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it's not a high-use area. I mean, there's, you know, at most, anticipate like six employees and stuff. It's more the small workshop. And these are separated bays, you know, for individual users. But to get, I mean, we'll come back in the spring, together with either the exiting signage and whether or not striping is warranted to ensure the flow of traffic. So, yeah, we're just now getting underway, so.
Are there updates in other areas, like lighting and things like that?
Uh, there was lighting done as part of the site plan review.
Yeah, is that all, is all that basically the same? Is it building-only lighting?
I'm sorry?
Is it building-only lighting and there was building-mounted lighting?
Uh, off the top of my head, I was wondering. I think there's maybe a couple of streetlights around the property, but I can, I'm sorry, get more detail and, you know, just send it, another memo to Mary on the types of light fixtures. Off the top of my head, I don't know that they are on the plan.
Right, Carl is reporting back to you because as a condition of your approval, he hadn't designed the signs or the honeycomb, so he's trying to bring you up to date with, you were gracious enough to approve him with the conditions that he report back. So he's doing his due diligence.
Those were the two that were called out, but certainly at any time the Board has questions, run them through, you know, through Mary and I'll certainly follow up on any of that stuff. But like Mary mentioned, these were the two specific items that the Board asked for an update. Just wanted to come back. And timing was good with the building permit being issued and getting underway with that.
Any other questions from the Board? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming back.
Great. It's 7:13, time for our second item on our agenda, which is a Form A application for MAP 42 Plot 24 on Rockland Street. And I believe this is a property that came in front of the CPC a while back. Wanted to ask the applicant if you could give us a description?
Well, basically this...
Just identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Michael Noonan. I live in Abington. This land is at 127 Rockland Street. And my sister and I have had this land, well, we got it from my grand, my grandparents. And before you approved the Form A, to split it up into three separate sections, one of the sections, the town took, this on the right-hand side of the pond, and the pot, this known as Lot 2, is what I have. And Lot 2 is 2.87 acres of land. And I would like to, well, have two lots. I'm not a builder or a developer or anything, so I don't know what else you want to know.
So you're making Lot 2, now Lot 2A and 2B?
Yes, exactly. That line down the middle is the new line. It has frontage of 150 on one of them, and then the other one is just whatever it is 'cause it's big.
311.
Mm-hmm.
Nothing has changed from the large lot that's the house and the pond, that's all as...
It's all to my sister.
Okay.
Yes.
I understand, okay.
Looks good.
Yeah, I don't, looks like you've got the frontage and, the minimum frontage is 150 feet and that, is this, what residence district is this?
Residence C.
C, so it's 150 feet. And it looks like you've got that, so you've got the access on the public way in the frontage and the setbacks, so it looks good to me. Guess I'd make a motion that we approve the A and R plan owned by Michael F. Noonan. What's the, the address on this? It's Rockland Street?
It's known as Zero Rockland Street right now 'cause there's no address assigned.
Okay.
It, and it just, for some reason, the town has just, has become known as Zero Rockland Street.
Zero Rockland, okay.
And the application form has Assessors MAP 42 Plot 24.
Okay, so that clearly identifies it. Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations. Yeah, there you go.
Just take it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Night, thank you. The next item on our agenda was a, just a review of the minutes. At the last, at the tail end of our last meeting, which is a very long meeting, I was kind of too tired to focus on the minutes. And there are just a couple of things I wanted to add in, and it's really on the, on the November 12th minutes, and it was on the, essentially at the tail end of, it's about the master plan discussion that we had, master plan discussion, land use. And the only thing I wanted to add is, is that we were talking about formatting. Mary was gonna put together a PDF of the formatting of the master plan document, which would include the comments that I had made and also the comments that, from that input that the MAPC had included in their final draft document, which the Board was gonna review. And I just wanted the minutes to reflect that, just as an update from where we were. So, I just wanted to make that as a note. I didn't really have...
Any of your comments, Gary, the red ones on this?
The, I look, yeah, I think it was the red ones. I think you said blue, Mary, but when I pulled this up on the way home, I think it's red.
Yeah, my computer screen, they're blue.
Oh, they're blue on yours and red in print? Well, that's good. I like that.
This is the document where the bold red are the suggested revisions from the Chair, and the rest of the comments are the suggested goals from the MABC and Planning Board Public Process. And the 2001 goals are the ones in these gray boxes.
And the gray boxes were the 2001?
They're the old ones.
That's correct.
So maybe that would make it easier to crosswalk it.
Okay.
The gray boxes are what, sorry, Mary? Those are the 2001 version.
So the original master plan is in gray?
The original goals.
In the boxes, and then I made some red comments, and then they incorporated the MAPC incorporated comments are...
I'm not crazy.
It's interesting that it printed both. That's odd.
See, this is from when we last met.
That's correct. That's correct. So I think that's clear.
And I also emailed you today the full report that has all the appendices, the citizen survey with the results, which I understand you all still have anyway in hard copy. If anyone else would like me to print some of that for you, let me know. So when will this next be on our agenda? We have nothing on the agenda for December 1st at all, so if the Planning Board would like, we could devote, how much time does a Board need?
I think it would be nice to schedule a meeting where we don't have any applications, where we can just freely discuss it, you know, early in the meeting, it'd be nice.
There's nothing currently on your agenda for December 1st or December 8th.
December 1st.
I have public hearings on the 15th.
It'd be good to do it the 8th just 'cause it would be hard to do...
Do you think you, it would give you some time to, because with Thanksgiving?
Right, right.
So we'll target the 8th.
That would work for me.
That's fine.
And if the Board has no other applications, do you want me to cancel the meeting of the 1st?
I think it would.
Okay.
Unless we, we can't do this, I would just cancel it.
Very good.
And then we can be prepared for the 8th. Appreciate you putting all that together. It's getting it together in one place.
Good way to break it out, too.
Yeah.
We know what the old one says, what the MAPC says and Gary's comments, so.
Yeah, great. Excellent. All right. So is that change or update on the minutes, okay?
Sure, that's fine.
I'd make a motion we amend the minutes of our previous approval of minutes of November 12th, 2014, to be noted as, as commented by Gary.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
I'm not voting 'cause I'm listening.
Ah, okay. All right. Our next item on the agenda, it's 7:21. Discussion of possible zoning articles, which the Planning Board would recommend to move upstairs for review at the Board of Selectmen. We have four articles on this agenda. One is housing accessory buildings and accessory dwelling units. The second is Section 3A-4.4, which is animal or veterinary hospitals. The third is a special permit A3 parking determination. And the fourth is an article on affordable housing. So in, in order, I thought, why don't we proceed with the discussion of the, the housing and the accessory units and accessory buildings?
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Could I just intervene for one second?
Sure.
The Board has updated material laid out in front of you on these items. And just for the record, I had mailed you draft language, and you'll see there's track changes on there.
This is a copy of what I sent.
So you should have laid out in front of you.
This is also a copy that I sent in June. Okay.
Revised information. The changes were suggested by Council to streamline the language, so for tonight's business, work off of the ones that were laid out in front of you, under your agenda.
Well, what I wanted to do was, I had sent through a, I had sent through a proposal to bifurcate the, the article. What was, what was initially suggested was to combine the articles that involve the accessory dwelling units, accessory buildings, and, and housing issues. And so there were three additional issues that were folded into that in addition to a proposed new article on the accessory dwelling units. And what I wanted to put in front of the Board is, is that at our accessory units study committee, which was formed as a study committee of the Planning Board, and the committee, the committee's task was to essentially make a recommendation to the Planning Board on accessory dwelling units. And so what I'd like to do, since the, since the committee has recommended that we move forward with a single article that was vetted very carefully in our meetings, I'd like to separate out the accessory dwelling units article as being separate from the other three. The other three are the, just a second. Get the right paperwork here. The other three were, one was the exemption pre-1941 for, to have a two-family unit. The second, which was Sections 3A 1.2, which is the March 10, 1941 section, relative to exempting buildings built before 1941. The second was the buildings incidental, or 3J, which was accessory uses. And the, I, my thought was is that since the committee, the study committee had basically looked at these, they had come up during our discussions, but the study committee recommended that we do those as separate issues and that we focus primarily on the specific article, which was the accessory dwelling units. So I'd like to put that in front of the Board as, as an option, as a, as a change to the, to the bylaws that we would send upstairs to the Board of Selectmen for their review. Ultimately, they'll review them and return them back to us for further review and scheduling public hearings on these articles. So I just wanted to get a, sure.
So would your proposal to break it down would be, the accessory dwelling unit would be separate from, or are you talking, you talking about three distinct articles or two?
Well, the, the proposal that came out last week was to have three separate articles combined, folded into one article, which would go up to the Board of Selectmen.
Where is that one?
That one is the one that was...
It would be the ADU article including the other section.
That's the one that has the blue highlights on the bottom. And that one reads, "Will the town amend the zoning bylaw of the town of Hingham adopted March 10, 1941, as heretofore amended to amend, insert, or delete as applicable certain provisions of the bylaw regulating housing, accessory buildings, accessory units, and/or accessory dwellings under the existing Sections 3A 1.2 and 3A 1.7, which is buildings incidental to a single or two-family dwelling, and 3J, accessory uses, and/or a proposed new section, 3A 1.8.1, accessory dwelling unit within or on the same lot as a single-family dwelling only, and/or proposed new Section 5I, accessory dwelling units, or act on anything related thereto." And what I was proposing to do is to edit that and make two articles out of the one article. And the first one would, would read, "Accessory dwelling units. Will the town amend the zoning bylaw of the town of Hingham adopted March 10, 1941, as heretofore amended to amend, insert, as applicable, certain provisions of the bylaw regulating the creation of a second dwelling unit on a single lot, including without limitation the provision of a proposed new Section 3A 1.8.8, which should be titled accessory dwelling unit within or on the same lot as a single-family dwelling only, and/or a new Section VA3, accessory dwelling units off-street parking requirements, and/or a new Section VI, accessory dwelling units, or act on anything related thereto. Such amendments may include the inclusion of proposed new Sections 3A 1.8.8, accessory dwelling unit within the same lot as a single-family dwelling, or a proposed new Section VI, accessory dwelling units, to provide flexibility in housing options under special permit conditions based on need." So that would be zoning article for want of discussion, XX. Zoning art, and that zoning article would be the zoning article that the accessory units study committee finalized at our meeting last Monday on November 17th, where the study committee met before the Planning Board meeting, made some edits, and then we finalized the, this draft warrant article in our meeting with the Planning Board. So that would be the first article. Let's call that XX. The second article that I thought we, we could then do, and this is an article that really hasn't had much in the way of discussion. And this would be an article YY, Housing and Accessory Buildings. Will the town amend the zoning bylaw of the town of Hingham adopted March 10, 1941, as heretofore amended to amend, insert, as applicable, certain provisions of the bylaw regulating housing, accessory buildings, accessory uses, under Sections 3A 1.8.7, which is the Schedule of Uses residential, and Section 3J, accessory uses, or act on anything related thereto. Such amendments may include the elimination or revision of Section 3A 2, 1.2, to address concerns about uniformity, which is the issue of the fairness of the pre-1941 exemption, and modifications to Section 3A 1.8.7, buildings incidental to a single-family or two-family dwelling, and accessory uses. And the reasoning behind this was several-fold. The first was is that the second items which were discussed, which were folded in to the accessory units proposed bylaw were not discussed or chosen to be further discussed by the accessory units study committee. We, they were brought up, and it was decided that they be discussed in a separate forum. So what I'm doing is taking the recommendation of the committee and essentially saying that would be the accessory units bylaw that we would discuss moving forward. And then, because the other three areas haven't really been fully discussed or vetted, that I thought that they would be better served if they were separated out and included in a separate series of discussions. The other concern that I've, I've seen on this, and what's nice is, is that people are definitely watching the HKM proceedings of these meetings, and so one gets feedback from people from these meetings. And one of the things that I've heard is, is that there's a lot of confusion between, if they're, if they're bundled together as three or four issues into one bylaw, and one of them is a brand-new bylaw, and the other are three, are edits or revisions to existing bylaw sections that we have now, that there was a lot of confusion also in that. So I thought that in, in the light of clarity and in the light of being consistent with the recommendations of the study committee, which worked diligently on preparing this, I thought that that might be a proposal that, that the Planning Board might entertain.
So Gary, where, I don't, I'm not finding any, and the thing that you handed us, this right here, is, they're both XX.
So here, the...
The second one sounds should be YY.
Take this, yeah, I made a mistake when I sent it out, so let me give you these, these handouts because I corrected that. I made a mistake in the...
So let me just clarify.
Is this all the same except for that?
It's all the same. It's just the YY, and I capitalized a couple of things, like Sections I hadn't capitalized, so that was a typo.
So the, the housing and accessory one building should be YY.
Housing and accessory buildings is YY. It looks like I still have the typo.
Let me just understand, so what you're doing is taking out the 1941 issue for this, I, I guess I'm a little confused, so maybe...
What I'm, what I'm proposing is, is that the, we came up with a new accessory unit, accessory dwelling unit bylaw to address a very specific need that's not currently addressed in the bylaw. And we were very specific to discussing that as a very specialized issue.
And you're saying that this bylaw change does not reflect that?
Well, no, I'm saying that the bylaw that I distributed with XX is the, this, which started out as a draft, but it's this one here. That was the November 17th draft.
Yeah.
So I put that away. This is the November 24th draft that we reviewed last week.
Okay.
That should be in the package you're looking at now.
Okay, yep.
That is exactly what the study committee recommended to the Planning Board last week, and we made some tweaks when we discussed it in the Planning Board meeting last week and then...
It still says the 17th on the bottom of it, Gary, for me.
Oh, okay.
The new one you just handed me.
Okay, so that one...
Does yours, too, Judy?
That should be the 24th, sorry.
Okay.
I gotta get better on my wordsmithing. So, yeah, that's the 24th, sorry about that. So that was, that's the, this is the accessory dwelling unit bylaw that the study committee prepared. And so I was proposing that the Planning Board look at that separately from these other issues, which are issues that have been on the list of zoning bylaw issues that we discuss, we set up this list last July. But we haven't spent any time discussing these issues, and I didn't think it made sense. I thought it was gonna confuse the issue if we bundled them all together. And the feedback that I've gotten from members on the committee and other people that I've talked to have basically said, supported that as a prudent idea. So you'd basically... So you'd basically separate them out and you'd have a separate zoning article YY, which dealt with the three issues of housing and accessory buildings. Does that make sense?
Which also, Sarah, says, still says XX at the top of it, but it's, oh, no, yeah.
It's, yeah. Change it, change it, yeah. So that was basically the proposal. I just wanted to make sure that it was clear.
I guess the best way to break it down is to say, okay, XX is, um, second dwelling on a single lot. YY would be the barn provision we've been talking about in forty-one. Does that make sense? Forty-one provision and.
While there's a.
And, and the, um, the accessory dwelling unit with the, we talked about, you know, the ability to move into a barn.
Actually, uh, in the initial recommendation from the Study Committee, which is XX, the, this, the accessory dwelling unit in, in the recommendation from the Study Committee is, uh, in the main house, the single-family house, is also a provision in this recommendation to do an accessory unit in an accessory dwelling, which would be a separate, an outbuilding. This, this, this draft allows both.
Right, but you broke it down.
This is XX, allows both, so we need to talk about that. And then YY deals with the two families. It basically deals with two-family, um.
Nineteen forty-one.
Exemption pre nineteen forty-one, and it deals with, um, accessory buildings and uses allowed and constraints on accessory buildings. And, um, and it also deals with accessory uses. And, and if it's helpful, we should, we could probably go to the, the bylaw sections on the use table and just explain what those are 'cause I think it would make it a little clearer.
Can I ask you a question, Gary?
Sure.
I think I suggested to Mary that as part of that new article XX, allowing accessory dwelling units in either the primary structure on the lot or a sec, an accessory structure, that we include a mention of a possible change to these other sections, not because we wanted to have a primary discussion about those other sections, but to the extent that those sections might need to be changed a little bit to be consistent with this new section. So here's my question. If you put, submit these as two separate articles and you're having public hearings about one of them, can you talk substantively about the other ones?
I think we can. Let me read, let me read the other two so that we can, um, look at what those, those two are referencing. So Item three A one point two reads, "Alteration and conversion of a single-family dwelling containing at least six rooms, exclusive of hall and bathroom, existing prior to March tenth nineteen forty-one, to accommodate not more than two families, provided that the exterior design of the structure is not changed from the character of a single dwelling." And I think that the reason that I thought that was a separate distinct issue from the accessory dwelling unit is because the accessory dwelling unit is not a two-family unit. It's a subordinate unit within a single-family house, and that subordinate unit would have shared utilities, et cetera. So it wouldn't be a separate, independent, two-family use. So there was a distinction there. The second.
Can I ask you a question on that one?
Sure.
When you say it wouldn't be a separate two-family use, what constitutes a family? Like, is a single person living somewhere a family? And if, so we're, we're using this kind of definition of a family to drive whether this is a two-family or an accessory dwelling unit? To, to me, it's kind of confusing making these, this, that the difference between these two articles rests on this distinction of it, whether it's two-family or not.
Well, actually, I think when one was, we, in our committee, we had made a distinction of, we weren't, we weren't basically centering the distinctions on family types or family designations, although in the first meeting, we had a long talk about that. This is the, it's really the issue of, when one says single-family, all of our zoning is basically one unit on one lot. So it's really a single, primary dwelling, which has always been called a single-family. A subordinate unit, which is a, an accessory unit, is distinguished from a two-family. Two-family really means two separate units, independent units on the same lot. Whereas in a, in the accessory dwelling units, the distinction we made was is that it was a subordinate unit within the house.
Because of the utilities.
Because of the utilities. So we did it by size, by space. We said it could be no more than, I believe, nine hundred square feet. And, um, and I'd have to check the bylaw to see if we set a percentage.
Forty percent.
Forty percent. And it was also temporary. A two-family is a permanent, uh, use, once enabled. Now, we also have, this is set up as a special permit authorization too, so that it's not a by right situation, as distinguished from the earlier bylaw one point two. That is a special permit situation too. It was originally by right up until nineteen fifty-five, but in nineteen fifty-five, it changed to special permit. So there's a distinction here that's made. It's really subordinate unit versus independent units. And the, also the distinction was is that the reason for the accessory dwelling unit would be to support the use of the building as a single family, primarily a single-family residence. And it, originally, the need, as expressed, was, a whole host of needs were identified, and most of tho, in all of those conditions, there was a relationship, a supportive relationship between the accessory dwelling unit occupant and the owner of the primary, single-family house. And by relationship, I don't mean a blood relation or a family relation. It was more of a supportive kind of a relationship. That's how it all started. So I think we're trying to make a distinction between the two. Let me read the other one, 'cause maybe it will, it will shed some light on this. And also, I'd like to ask, um, members of the Study Committee who are here, if, if you could, if I'm not making it clear enough, if you could make it, if you could speak to any of these questions, that'd be great. Item one point eight seven, three A one point eight seven. These are all in the Schedule of Uses in the zoning bylaw, page seventeen of the zoning bylaw. The former art, the, the earlier article that I read was page sixteen of the zoning bylaw. And, um, this is three A one point eight point seven. "In accessory buildings incidental to a single-family dwelling or a two-family dwelling, the following uses are permitted. The accessory use is listed in subsections one point eight through one point eight six above, which include garaging of not more than three private passion, passenger vehicles, garaging or parking of one non-private passenger vehicle with a minimum gross weight of ten thousand pounds, garaging or parking of a non-private passenger vehicle in excess of ten thousand pounds, professional office or studio of a resident, resident physician, dentist, attorney, architect, artist, musician, engineer, real estate or insurance broker, or member of another."
I think you're reading the wrong.
One point eight one through six above is what I'm reading. All right. These are, these are related in one point eight seven? Just so I thought I'd read them so people would know.
Oh, I see.
You know what I'm, that's all. I just don't wanna rattle off the sections and not note the content 'cause it, it just confuses things. So there's really a professional office, as long as it's not more than three persons. Office or studio of a resident, art dealer, interior decorator, appraiser, provider that said office or studio is open to clients by appointment only, no more than three persons. A customary home occupation such as dressmaking, millinery, conducted by a resident on the premises, provided that no more than one other person is regularly employed in that use. So these are the kinds of things that are allowed, incidental uses in accessory buildings. And, uh, "such that other uses are customarily incidental to a residential loose, use, including but not limited to barns, garages, workshops, artist studios and the like, living rooms, eating areas, cooking facilities, and sanitary facilities, excluding bathing facilities." So this accessory, uh, building article excludes bathing facilities. So it's not a residence. As long as, in combination, "these uses do not create a detached dwelling unit with complete living facilities for one or more households, notwithstanding the foregoing. Bathing facilities shall be permitted with a pool house located directly adjacent to and serving an in-ground swimming pool." I just bring these two up because the, um, uh, I think they're, they're different in terms of, of their focus, in terms of what we were focusing on relative to the accessory dwelling units. And then the, I, I, Category three J, Section three J, which is on page forty-five of the zoning bylaw, essentially describes the same thing as the, as the Schedule of Uses. It talks about incidental uses located on the same lot, et cetera. So there really isn't anything overly different in that than in the other two I read. So I was just suggesting, since the committee made a distinction, a, a pretty clear distinction on our approach relative to the accessory dwelling units, I thought we should look at that as a separate bylaw. And then these other three could be looked at separately as an adjacent or a subsequent bylaw. So that's, does it, would the, anyone on the Study Committee like to offer anything? If I missed something on this, if you could, Eileen? You could just come to the mic, 'cause people can hear the audio.
Good evening. My name's Eileen Calnann, and I was one of the individuals that served on this subcommittee. I, I'm not so sure that I have anything particularly new to add besides the support of the subcommittee to some of what Gary has already said. We specifically, in our meetings, talked about whether we were going to discuss any of the other issues and purposefully decided, no, we were not. We were only going to talk about the accessory dwelling units. And so, as a committee, we have discussed the fact that we would, we would feel it would be objectionable to be mixing these two subjects together because we only talked about one issue at all our meetings and crafted a very specific, what we felt was a very specific proposed, um, bylaw that even on its face says that an accessory dwelling unit shall not be interpreted as a two-family dwelling. So we wanted this to be a completely separate, brand-new bylaw that deals with a, a need that we see out there in the town. And we would, we would find it objectionable to mix the two together because we don't feel like we educated ourselves or vetted or discussed any of the other subjects. And so now to take them and squish them in with a bylaw proposal that does include what we specifically talked about is problematic for, for us as a committee.
Can you just tell me why they were mushed together? Like, what, what happened between when you proposed whatever you did to this?
When we started out as a committee, it was our understanding that we were only sent on a mission to talk about accessory dwelling units. If the Planning Board had intended for us to do more than that, we were not aware of that fact. And so.
And I guess what I'm, what I'm asking is that you're saying that the, that the bylaw that we received is not really what you discussed, so I'm just.
No, the bylaw that you received is exactly what we discussed.
The bylaw, but not the proposed.
But not the.
Not the proposed motion.
The proposed grouping, the proposed warrant.
The proposed zoning change was not reflected, but the bylaw itself is.
Right. If you separate them, then the one that's XX is what we talked about. But if you take YY and put it in, we didn't talk about any of the YY items, and so we would, we would be very unhappy to feel like we were now having them merged together and presented to the town when we never talked about those things. And they're not part of our bylaw.
All right, thank you.
And what happened in terms of the terminology is, is that we met on the twenty, on the seven, on the seventeenth, and we came up with this bylaw, which is in front of you. After that meeting is when the mixing of the, um, other bylaw sections happened on recommended, was recommended by some, some, that that happened. And in the midst between that meeting and this meeting, and thinking things through, a number of us felt that that was not appropriate. So hence, we have this revised organization.
All right, I wondered, Mark Cullings, Member-at-Large, and let me throw a different spin at it. In the wake of the last meeting, I personally sensed, uh, kind of a serious issue going forward and taking this new bylaw, the XX, now, now noted, next, the XX, to town meeting, when there appeared to be significant confusion between what we are proposing as an auxiliary dwelling unit and the existing, uh, bylaws involving two families. And, uh, in, in my view, um, taking an issue to town meeting that is spring-loaded to the, or, or heavily loaded toward the element of confusion among voters is probably not smart. But we also know that there has been and continues to be interest in revisiting the pre nineteen forty-one, um, issues, and they're legitimate issues. No, we did not, that was not our charge. We stayed strictly away from it. But if it's the Planning Board's wish to look at the, the, uh, the other three bylaws and come up with changes there or adaptations that are more contemporary and more useful now, I think that that's a legitimate concern because this is a significant issue that, as, uh, Mr. Cook has pointed out, this affects every citizen in the town, and we're interested in doing it well and doing it right.
So at our, at our, we had three meetings, um, of the committee, and then we came in on the seventeenth. We could go in front of the, uh, in, before the Planning Board meeting. And at our second meeting, I believe, we did raise the subject of these, at least the pre nineteen forty-one, and, and the other issue, which was the, um, two-family and, and the accessory structures. The committee decided as a group that that was not, um, was not the appropriate level of discussion to have when we were focusing on this other issue. So we were really creating a new bylaw to address the specific issue of the accessory dwelling units. That was the focus of, of the committee, as the committee had articulated. So I think that, um, in looking at, in looking at this, this bylaw that was created, um, the, uh, the focus of it, um, is essentially providing housing options in sing, single-family neighborhoods that are appropriate for smaller households, create opportunities for homeowners who can no longer physically or financially maintain their homes, encourage a better utilization and preservation of the existing housing stock and accessory structures by expansion of allowed uses, eliminate unpermitted accessory units to enable the town to monitor construction for code compliance and protect, protect stability, property values, residential character of their sound, of the surrounding neighborhoods. I think that one of the things that we, we talked about very distinctly at the meetings is, is that really the purpose of a zoning bylaw is to protect the abutters and the neighbors. Primary responsibility of the zoning bylaw. And we were trying to respond to that relative to both articulating this as a, as an entity, but also developing a series, a framework of protections for the, for the abutters and the neighbors. Sure.
Can I just object there for a minute, Gary? As I was, I was, as I was looking at this, I, you know, three of them I highlighted and, and sort of said, how does this bylaw do that? And I don't feel it does. I mean, I, the, the first one encouraged better utilization and preservation of existing housing stock. I'm not sure how this bylaw does it. Accessory structures by expansion of allowed uses. I think, I, you know, beautiful barns are beautiful barns, and you change them to houses, they become a very different thing. And I, you know, I know I wasn't present at the last meeting, but I, I think it's not a surprise that, uh, this was very hard for me to read. I felt like last year, when we visited, or a year and a half ago, and we said, okay, we're gonna, uh, we don't have time to do this because this is too substantial a change if we don't do this right. I feel like this says, you can have two lots, two, two units of housing per every lot in the town of Hingham. And, and that's really what I want to avoid. And, and so carefully, we have to tread this so carefully because we could, by this bylaw, essentially change the town. And this doesn't, I mean, I, I just don't, I don't, I don't see D. See, I don't see D, and I don't see E. I think eliminate unpermitted accessory units. I think if people still have an unpermitted accessory unit in a sewer syst, in, in this, in the, in a, on septic, they're not gonna come forth with their, uh, units that exceed bedroom count. So I don't think that's gonna necessarily work. And I certainly don't think it's gonna protect, protect stability of property values. I think it's gonna just change things. I mean, I thought this was, I, I don't know. I mean, I thought this was, I, I don't know, I thought we were going to carefully tread this, this needs just seems to, to put a big, a, a big open-ended allowance in a way that I just feel like, whoa, this is a huge change. And I certainly wasn't ready for it a year ago, I wasn't ready for it five years ago. I, as a planning board member, I feel there is no way I could comfortably put this forward at town meeting in this manner, and feel like I am looking out in the best interests of this town. Yeah, maybe the guy next to me who wants to live in their barn when their kids, you know, as their kids are getting older and they want to give them the house and live in the barn, but that's not what this is about. This is about what is in the best interest of the town of Hingham and maintaining it in the manner in which we all love. And I just think this is, this is a snowball effect that I just don't, you know, the septic system, the effect on the sewer, the management of it, the, you know, how will we, we probably will have to have new building, two new building inspectors to try to manage these issues. How do we enforce rental or non-rental? How do we, you know, it, it seems to me you can't rent it, but I don't know how we're going to do that. A nine-hundred-square-foot house, gosh, I raise a family of, of five in a twelve-hundred-foot square house. You know, I could add a nine-hundred-foot square house to, to my property? I don't know, I'm just, I, I just worry. I think, I, I think it's a, we're opening up a Pandora's box that if we don't really think about this and understand the ramifications and the unintended consequences, we can't close that box. And we are, we are sitting behind the helm during a time when we have changed the town of Hingham in a way that I am unprepared to do. So bifurcate or not, I am not in favor of pushing this forward.
Let me, let me ask a question, and I appreciate every, all the points that you've made, because I think they're very valid. If current, single-family zoning basically says one unit on one lot, if the unit was a subordinate unit within the main dwelling and was not in an accessory building, would that impact the thinking in any way?
Yes. I think it would impact the, the thinking for a number of reasons. You absolutely would have a family member in, in that kind of unit. I don't think you'd, you'd want to rent it out, or, or, or sort of, it, it, yes, it works better for me, but I still, you know, the specifics of it, this just seems so open-ended. And, and so much of it relies, too, on the permitting boards, which we know are very responsible and good, but we don't know what the permitting roads, boards down the road are going to be, and we, you know, to leave so much in the hands of three to five people, and, and say, oh yeah, sure, you know, you can put up that unit right next to that house with, I, I don't know, I just, there's so much that's allowed here that could all, you know, irrevocably alter our town. And, and I know that not everybody right away will be, you know, putting in an accessory unit, but I think we have to think about not ourselves, and not we, we want individually, but what we think is in the best interests of this town, and that's always our job. We should never look at things, oh yeah, gosh, you know, it'd be great for my kids to live in my house, and, and I could go live in the barn, or in my case, the chicken coop. That's not how we have to look at this. We have to look at, what does this mean for the town of Hingham, and how does this change us? And I think, to me, it changes us a lot, so...
Sure. Okay. Sarah, your, your points are well-taken. We've heard that same viewpoint from some others. I just wanted to kind of take you back, I don't know whether you saw the, the video of the first meeting, or whatever, when, when we first convened, but we did some research. This is, we're not really, really inventing something new at all. We have a, a study that's now ten years old, that, from the Pioneer Institute, that reported seventy-five to eighty communities around the state, towns around the state, that have exactly this legislation. And then we took the, the eighteen towns, added Duxbury, because it's not on the conventional list of towns that Hingham compares itself with, so there are nineteen towns, and thirteen of them, twelve, thirteen of them have this legislation, and have been living with this legislation for over ten years, some of them twenty and thirty years. There is not a large demand, to your, your point about everybody in town doing this. This is, it costs money, there, there typically has to be a need for a family to consider doing this, because it's disruptive of a household fundamentally. The, the enforcement issues and the, the issues over who lives in it and whether it's rentable, we felt in the study committee that, that by limiting size, putting a, a time constraint on it, a special permit process on it, it's been suggested a site plan review be, be incorporated into it. That's not part of our, our proposal. But it is certainly not the experience around the entire state, in, in our experience, that that suggests that this has become a changing event to Concord, Lexington, Milton, Duxbury, Cohasset, and, and go on and on. So I, I think some of the fears are, are overstated perhaps, and, and, and there, it's, it's important to consider.
Right. How many of those towns that you mentioned, certainly I think Lexington, Milton, sewored, and there's a, we're thirty percent sewored and seventy percent septic, which makes a big difference.
Well, all of the towns, whether it's, it's Westwood, or, or Situate, that sewage versus non-sewage, in order to get a special permit, you must comply with applicable zoning bylaws and health departments.
Much, much harder to enforce the septic twelve-five rule, much harder.
Well, but, but you know, that's, as I've said before, is that a reason not to do something that, that meets a need in, in a town with a, with a demonstrable aging population and a variety of other expressed needs? The need for in-home care for handicapped children and those kinds of, of things. We don't, we don't know what all of the uses are, but currently, and the point that I've, I've made, I think, in two other, other meetings, is that Hingham's, that this is, to, for me, we, property rights are, are, are paramount, and Hingham is restrictive in the kinds of things that a property owner can do by right, and this is something that is pretty mainstream and governed by a special pro, uh, permit process.
I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, and I guess I just see a significant change, and I would, you know, all of those towns, it would be curious to know who's, who's sewored and septic, but the other thing I would say is that, you know, growing up in an old house in a, in a, in a different town than Hingham, and now living in an old house, my father always taught us that we were stewards of the land and stewards of the property, and that it was not, you know, I remember, we had one bathroom, I have one bathroom now, we would argue with my father about putting a bathroom upstairs, and he would say, if we do that, we are going to change the nature of the home, and that's not in the best interest of the property, this old house. We are changing the nature of it. And the, the job that we have in living in a house or in a community is to be stewards, not to think about ourselves. So I think, you know, I, I hear that, that, you know, that there is a need for this, I think responsible movement toward that need is a direction I'm just not seeing by this. And so, that's my concern, that we're, you know, as my father taught me, stewards of a home, stewards of land, we're, um, as a planning board member, stewards of a town. And I, I think this just changes us in a way that I'm just not comfortable with. You know, this means that there could be two units of housing for every lot. That's what it means, and, and I'm not, I'm uncomfortable with that.
Um, I just, I did call these towns, this thing that Mark picked together, only four of the twenty towns do allow the detached, just, that's in his little note of sale. Dedham, eighty percent sewored, Lexington, ninety-eight percent, Milton, ninety percent, Rockland, ninety-five percent. Situate, she couldn't give me a number, but she said there are eight thousand two hundred and thirty houses that are on sewer. Westwood, ninety-eight percent. Those are the ones I called, the only ones I called, they're all eighty, ninety percent. It's a lot different when you're sneaking a little extra bedroom in, and you're on a sewer. We have our groundwater to think about, we, you know, this year, you couldn't water in your own yard. I just think that opening this up and allowing this, every house, as I understand it, until someone tells me differently, if you have a two-bedroom, a four-bedroom house now on half-acre, okay, already twice as many as you should have with Title V, but they're grandfathered. Now they come in, and they want an ADU, and they say, oh, we'll give up two of our bedrooms, we're going to build a nice little barn in the back and put two bedrooms in there, because we're grandfathered for four. Now you essentially have six bedrooms on that half-acre lot. And you could do this all over the town, there's, there are no parameters in this bylaw you guys are proposing, none. It doesn't say you have to have so many square feet, it doesn't say anything about that. And that's just, I, I, you know, if this thing ends up going through down the line, but you've got to do some more homework. And I thought we were going to have, where are we going to get a number of how many units in town could do this?
Yes, we are.
Yeah?
We're working on it.
But I, I think it's every single house. I think every single house could apply for this.
Can I, can I say something?
Chair, go ahead, you.
Okay. Thank you, Camille, I think that your comments are important, and I think Sarah's are important. I would ask the chair to, to kind of articulate what we're doing here tonight, because I think what we're doing here tonight is not arguing the merits of this particular bylaw, but, but deciding whether we think we should respond to a stated need from a lot of people in this town to look at whether there should be accessory dwelling units in Hingham. The, I don't think the question before us tonight is whether this bylaw is ready to be adopted by town meeting. That is not the question that I thought that we were considering. And I would say, I, I am delighted always to hear about conservation of stewardship of our properties and conservation of Hingham's charm and characters, but I think that the zoning bylaw does two things, not one thing. The one thing that it does, that I do believe is primary, is preserving the character of this town, which both Gary and Sarah so eloquently put it. But the other, and I think equally important, on the same pedestal at the top, is respecting the rights of private property owners to develop their land. And we need to have a bylaw that does that. It's not to say that we need to have a bylaw that lets everybody do whatever they want on their property, but if a lot of people in town come to workshops that we have for the master plan update, and say they're concerned, they can't, they want to stay in their neighborhood, they want to stay where they've been for the last forty or fifty years, they can't afford a big house anymore, they live in a big house, there are not that many small houses in Hingham that have what people want, or that are in the same neighborhood. Why is that any less important to us as a planning board than a perception that by allowing people to do that, we're going to lose barns? I think you're going to preserve barns, and it's just my point of view. I think that if someone has a use for that barn, and you have a bylaw that maybe has some kind of design review in it, that you could, that this could be better for the town, because you would preserve the towns and the, the structures that are historic in this town, and you would allow people to stay where they've been for the last forty or years. So I think the only way to move forward tonight is to limit our conversation to whether or not we want to move this to the next stage where we hammer out those details, like, should there be design review? I think, you know, it's nine-hundred square feet or forty percent of the gross floor area, so if the principal dwelling unit were twelve-hundred square feet, not good at math, but forty percent of that is less than six-hundred square feet. So it's not, and the, and there would have to be space on the land for that to be accommodated within the setbacks. So I don't think every house in Hingham would be able to do that, because some of the lot sizes in Hingham are pretty small. There are others that are not. I think it all bears research. But to dismiss this, excuse me, wait, but to dismiss this out of hand tonight, because there's, there's fear, and because there's certain provisions in it that we don't like, I think is really irresponsible.
Let, let me go back to you, if I could, and address the, the, why we're here, just for a second. The planning board is voting on whether to move a series of bylaws to the next step. And as part of that question, and as part of that discussion, I think there's the issue of addressing the very valid concerns of what is the potential impact of this kind of a bylaw, because it's a new bylaw, and it's a change to our current bylaw. And I think the issue of maintaining the current residential character in the town, which is primarily single-family zoning, single-family house lots, one house, one lot, is a, is a key parameter, the basis of the zoning bylaw. And I think working within the basis of the bylaw, and looking at the, the primary driving issues here, I think is a very appropriate part of the discussion. I think that, yes, there's a series of, of very important criteria that have been expressed. For example, there's a lack of specificity of controls, there is an issue of how does this, how are unintended consequences dealt with? And I think, yes, there's a series of specific discussions, but before we get to the specific discussions, I think there's a premise here that people are raising, and that's the issue. We dealt, we dealt with it a lot on the study committee, is the issue of maintaining the current character of one house on one lot. And so I guess there are two points to that discussion, if people felt that there was a need basis for putting a subordinate unit in a house, and that could be controlled such that when the need was no longer there, it could be a temporary situation, and you could bring it back to a single family, that's one thing in terms of a premise. The other premise is, and I think we should, we should talk about this, is, is, and we've, we talked about it on the committee, is there's an accessory unit, but there's also an accessory building. And the question is, if we have accessory units in the primary house, that's one issue. If there are accessory units in the primary house, or in the outbuilding or the accessory building, you have two residential units on one lot. And so there's the issue of reversibility. So I think it, it speaks to, I think we need to talk about the philosophy of this, and the basis of this, before we, we talk about the details. And I think it's substantive, and I think, Sarah, you've picked up on it, I'd like to ask Bill and Walter if you could weigh in, too, to just, I think is, is, in evaluating this, we put a lot of time and a lot of good time into developing the framework that you see in front of us. I agree, there's a lot more work that needs to be done, but let's go back to the, the premise relative, our role, our job is to uphold the requirements of the bylaw. And so if that, in, in addressing our role, what other parameters, and I'd like to ask Bill if you could weigh in, Walter if you could weigh in, and I'd like to talk a little bit more about that.
Well, I mean, I, I just, I generally like your idea of breaking this up, okay? I think that's, that's the way we should proceed, and the study committee seems to agree with you there. I'm just wondering, in the way you broke up XX, you, you were proposing that the second dwelling unit would be on the single lot, not, not just within the single structures.
It's, yes.
So I'm kind of confused, because it's not, because it sounds like you're saying something different, but your, your motion would have the, the bar, I guess, I'm calling it the barn provision, but the second dwelling unit, but you're saying something differently. So I want to make sure we're clear on what we're going to vote on.
The motion that this, this, this motion here reflected the recommendation of the committee, which was to have the accessory unit in the main house, but also have the possibility of an accessory unit in an accessory structure. And that's how the committee last left it. I think what I'd like to ask the planning board, in terms of looking at this motion relative to that, is do we distinguish and separate those, and say that, you know, one option is to just look at the issue of the feasibility of an, of an accessory dwelling unit within the main house, and then the accessory building and accessory unit, that issue is a separate issue, or it's to combine them? In, in the discussions that, in the feedback that I've had since our meetings, after our meeting, there's always feedback, and feedback since our last meeting, is, is that when the question was asked, what are people's feelings or approach on an accessory dwelling unit within the primary dwelling, there was a, a strong majority saying that that was not, that was consistent with the thinking going forward. But when I raised the question of accessory dwelling unit in an accessory building, or an outbuilding, then I did not have that.
Where was, where was this, I mean, is this a separate meeting that you raised these questions?
No, no.
I think that's, that's like holding a, a poll or something outside of a public meeting.
No, this is, this is just feedback, people call, you know, just trying to take the pulse, I'm talking to people around. This is just the feedback I've gotten. I'm not saying it's, it's the, you know, it's a poll or anything, it's just what I've heard, as this issue is being evolved. And so the question I would have is, and I'd ask, you know, Sarah, if you're looking at this in terms of maintaining the, the residential character of the town, if, is the, is the thing that you see that's in conflict with that primarily the second unit on the lot?
Yeah, and the size of it.
And the size of it.
Nine-hundred square feet. I mean, my point...
I mean, my point, Judy, in the, in the, in my house is that this is not a whole lot smaller than my family house of five, that's what I'm saying, that the, this accessory dwelling unit.
Right, so then if this, I think that, that's why, why I think it's really important right now to decide what we're deciding tonight, because if you thought in concept that there should be an, that there, that people should be allowed to have an accessory dwelling unit, then that number doesn't have to be nine hundred, it could be five hundred, it could be any number, or the, you know, sort of, there could be design review, there could be all these different elements. I think this conversation should not be diving into the number of square feet and the look of it, but whether we think
Right, but the problem
that people should be able to do this.
Right, and I, and I don't, I don't disagree that people should be able to do this. I disagree that this is even close to being ready for, for a, we, there's so much to vet in this that I don't think we can have it ready for the, the date that we need to have it up to the, uh, advisory board. Or the, yeah, the advisory committee and it's in its final form, it's, it's a long way from that.
What is that date?
Advisory?
Yeah.
Um, it's in March by the time we go?
No.
Because after we go to public hearing, like, if, if the board advances any one of these bylaws, you're just saying that you're going to have a conversation and then you're going to open public hearings and whatever draft language you have, you will probably change. You can revoke any article at any time from town warrant. The date for advisory for the drafts?
Well, a lot earlier than March.
I thought it was January twentieth.
I mean, you know, you'll have your public hearings and then we will have our hearing, but for the final draft and the final thing that is the warrant article and the language and the comment has to be done, and it's like March sixteenth or nineteenth, something like that.
But in general, we have to have it to advisory much, much earlier than that.
Oh, well, we have the hearing much before that. I'm just saying by, you know, everything has to be finalized by that because that's what everything's born to the printer. But, so you have to back out from there, uh, and if this is going to take several meetings of a lot of discussion and, you know, a lot of tweaking and looking at different, then we're talking, you know, you've got to get way back.
Well, our public hearings would start, um, all of the bylaws, whether they're citizen proposals or planning board or zoning board proposals, have to be to the selectmen by December first. And then
I don't think that, I, that's my strong feeling here, that we don't have the time to, to work this article. I mean, besides the design review, besides the enforcement of it, besides really that issue of, of, uh, an accessory dwelling unit versus a dwelling unit, you know, on, a separate one on the lot versus the interior one, there's some substantial issues here and this isn't even close in my mind to where we would want it to be, which does not mean, Judy, that this, this ends, it just is, we, we, you know, keep working on this. It's, I, I don't feel comfortable moving this forward in this, in this format, even taking a vote to say, yes, I'm comfortable in concept with this because I'm simply not. I'm not, you know, I understand the need for this, but I don't think that this is necessarily the answer. And I, I mean, just in Mark's comment about the pioneer study, eighteen towns, but then we find out, you know, that Camille's looking at it only for, for allowed, detached, we should really look into this pioneer study, know about the difference between septic and sewer, because it really does make a significant difference in terms of the health of our town. Um, so, you know, this pioneer study would be great to look at, but, but I think there's some big questions in it.
Well, that's fine, and, and what I was going to say, and Mary, I don't necessarily repeat it, I think we're here, those of us who participate in the study committee, to find out if you want to move it forward. We've gotten into the weeds, detached versus in, in the primary dwelling, all of, all of these kinds of things, these are the things that come out when you, you hammer it out and, and, and hear the issues raised in public hearings, probably not tonight. A lot of time has gone on and, and we're talking about details, not the concept. The concept, I think, is mainstream and important for the town of Hingham.
So I think that the question, the question then is, go ahead, Billy, if you want.
Do you want to ask anybody else in the audience?
Uh, I actually, yeah, sure.
Would anybody else like to speak from the committee or from the audience?
I'm Amy Richards from the HGIC in the study committee. Some of the things, Sarah, that you've hit upon are headings that we have worked on, we have talked about. For example, speci- special permitting is the vehicle. However, it would require a building permit, an occupancy permit, and we've talked about a site, a site plan review in addition, which, um, to our knowledge, other communities haven't done. We have thirteen, um, communities that we've looked into and talked about. Retaining a neighborhood character was paramount in every single one of them. They have, they have language in it or they have implied language, very key. Minimum lot size, we can put in there what we choose. Some of them have ten thousand, um, square foot minimum, some of them have twenty thousand minimum. We can do what the town feels is appropriate and adequate. With regard to a house that has a septic, for an example, um, like Camille used a four-bedroom. If an existing four-bedroom house wants to put in an auxiliary apartment or even, um, a, a separate dwelling, the one septic per lot, even if the town chooses to do an auxiliary building, only one septic per lot, and if that were permitted for a four-bedroom, it would be two bedrooms in two bedrooms. It doesn't mean that the second unit gets more bedrooms. Bruce was at one of our meetings and because the Board of Health weighs in even on rental units, he is very involved in any and all of this. It's very, there's a tremendous amount of overview that goes into it. It isn't just a rubber stamp. Owner occupied, all the units have to be owner occupied. It expires on sale and that, that's another safety feature. We can, we can permit them, special permit them for one year, three years, five years. Those are the variables that other communities have done. Again, it's a way of keeping, monitoring it. The bottom line is we can do what is good for Hingham, but thirteen, eighteen towns that we studied, we didn't go statewide. We did geographically what was near us or similar towns with regard to size and such. There are, there are safeguards in place and we can put in as many as we want.
Let me ask a question relative to, um, process and constraints and logistics. The next, the next, um, let's say move, if, if this were to go forward, the next review process, it goes to the Board of Selectmen, it comes back on the first of December, it comes back to the planning board. A number of hearings are scheduled, those hearings are scheduled primarily in January.
Well, they would open, um, the tentative schedule is, is that on January fifth, the planning board would open all of the hearings, not to discuss the bylaws substantively, but to look at the list in its entirety and then decide how you want to schedule those moving forward.
So that's January fifth, and so if we have a two-week notification going forward, then our first, basically our first series of hearings would start in late January, let's say it's the twentieth.
Well, we have to do a duly notice public hearing, so if I get the material from the selectmen, say December fourth or fifth, then I do my public notice, the first meeting I could advertise for would be January fifth. Now, if the board would like, um, you know, you could certainly choose that night of January fifth, to pick one to start talking about, that's the board's discretion, and then at that meeting on the fifth, you could lay out your roadmap for, um, I put in front of you your list of meetings. You could say, okay, let's hold these for applications and all these other meetings will devote to bylaws.
From January, I'm just trying to get a sense of the review picture and how much time would be available. So let's say we do January nineteenth, if there was a serious allocation for perhaps this bylaw, we also have a number of other ones we're looking at, um, January twentieth. Then basically this would have to be finalized, the specific language going up to, on the, going into the warrant would have to be finalized by March nineteenth, right? March nineteenth, March twentieth?
Maybe.
It's much, I mean, the final is that, but earlier, so if, let's say it's in February, my recollection is, on warrant articles typically they're, they're finalized in early February.
Just to say that when you
Linda, could you go up to the mic?
Gary, if I could just correct something you said, what Mary said was that we could decide to start our hearings on the first meeting in January, that we don't have to wait until that first meeting to decide. So you thought, I think you said that we couldn't have our first hearing until January twentieth. What I heard was that we could have our first one as early as January fifth.
So if we looked at, I believe we did that last year.
Right, you have a fifth, you have fifth, twelfth, and twenty-sixth. February second, ninth, and twenty-third, March second, nine, sixteen, and twenty-third.
We can't go that far into it, Don, I mean, that's, it's, whenever we do that, it gets very tricky.
Right.
You know, in general, zoning articles need to be done by, you know, in my mind, towards the end of February in order to have them.
Right.
Because we've got to then get to advisory and it's then got to get into the warrant and it's a, um, it's, it's definitely being pushed back. I feel like, you know, we are always, we're always struck by how quickly it comes every year.
So there's about, there's about five meeting dates between the time it would have to be finally finalized in addition to the other things. And I'm just raising this question in terms of looking at the constraints. The other series of constraints are, is, is that there are related issues to this bylaw that are going to come up in the discussion of this bylaw as this bylaw is, if this bylaw were to go to town meeting, there's the related issues, the lateral issues, um, which are the other zoning articles that relate to accessory buildings and accessory uses. And the question that, and I'm, I'm thinking primarily about having all of the issues vetted on, on the lateral ones, because those questions are going to come up and those questions are going to impact how people look at this particular series of, of requirements. And question I would have is, is there enough time between now and this town meeting to vet these? Or should we basically wait until town meeting two thousand and sixteen and establish a longer schedule where we could continue this going, continue the vetting of this, continue the momentum, but address the specific issues that seem to be in need of vetting in order for this to, you know, go, go to town meeting? I'm just, I'm thinking about the discussion at town meeting.
Well, procedurally, um, the planning board can withdraw any article from the warrant right up until the day of town meeting if you feel it's not ready. So if there's a concern that you don't have the power, if you feel you're not ready to stop, the board can always exercise your right to withdraw any or all of your articles from the warrant.
I, um, think that this is just too important to try. It seems like we're trying to make this fit to a schedule rather than to do the right thing and get the right zoning thing in place. I think it's a mistake. I think we need to hear from the building commissioner about what is allowed and what's not allowed. I think we're a little fuzzy on that. You thought people could already use barns, Judy, as housing, but I don't think they can, and I think we need to hear from the building commissioner. If it's legal, then why, why do we even need this?
I said they can't. I said I think that if people can use it as an apartment, that they would be probably more likely to invest in it. I didn't say that they can. In fact,
Oh, I thought you
I think one of the problems in Hingham is, is, and the reason why I suggested that we include mention of the other three articles in this one, is because people don't really know. And so they are building units without permits, maybe because they don't know that they are not allowed to. And so that having this come forward would be an opportunity to educate people about what they are and are not allowed to do.
Well, I think then the building commissioner check a building once it's done.
Apparently the, the building commissioner prior to the current one had a different interpretation of the bylaw than what was intended.
Right now, the bylaw is not allowing residential uses
Exactly.
in accessory buildings.
So we are doing a huge
So this would be a paradigm shift if we did
We're doing a huge change. We're having two dwelling units on one lot, is what this boils down to. Not, you know, I don't have a problem with them being in the house, you know.
I don't see the difference, but
Oh, I think it's a huge difference.
Because if I drive up Main Street, I see barns with dwelling units in them because they were attached by a wa- a covered walkway, so you could build covered walkways all over town.
Yes, you can.
So it's the same thing.
But you can also, under this bylaw that's being proposed, uh, take a house on, I don't know, down in Crow Point someplace, put a garage in the back and put two more bedrooms in there.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Maybe. No, the way this is written, there's a lot of maybes. It doesn't, this does not allow, allow anybody to do anything without meeting all of whatever it's going to say.
But there are not that many parameters in this thing. There are not that many things that say, you know, it, it's just, it needs more work. It needs a lot more work. Because otherwise, I think almost everybody in town, seriously, if you read through the draft, almost anyone could do it. And other towns, I, I think it's Weston that, um, has, if you do it in, they allow it in another building, but you have to have enough land that that thing could be on its own anyway. You have to have another of its forty thousand square foot zoning, you have to have another forty thousand square feet, maybe it's not subdivisible for some reason. But to sustain that, because of the, they're on septic, you need that second lot.
If I
And they were saying, you know, whatever, close off two bedrooms until the building commissioner leaves and then, then go back to your four bedrooms in your house and two bedrooms.
Camille, I just have one, did you come to the meeting that started all of this? Because I, I'm sitting here remembering a meeting that we had three months ago?
July fourteenth?
July fourteenth?
No.
Okay. With a very large audience, a very large audience. I totally respect what you're saying and I, and I, and I value your point of view. We sat here with a room with at least thirty or forty people in it. Every single person who spoke, spoke in favor of the town addressing the need for accessory dwelling units.
Well, now that I know about it, I'll get thirty or forty people
Right, right. So then, isn't that, so then, isn't that a great discussion? That's my only point. I don't know what the right thing is, but I do know that as a town, we should be talking about it.
We should be talking about it.
Okay.
But I think we're moving way too fast, I really do.
If you don't have an article, we're not talking about it. People don't pay attention.
Well, let's, I think that what I've heard consistently is, is that we've established a need and we're responding to a need. The question is how does it get vetted? And do we have, do we have enough time to do the kind of vetting that would be required to have it essentially in a convincing, uh, form that we could basically, um, get a positive vote at town meeting? And one of the things that I'm seeing is, is that it's all in the details and do we have enough time to vet this and does it make better sense to take more time to vet it and get it right than to take less time to vet it and then have it be confusing as it's, as it evolves towards town meeting? And I guess I'd ask, I'd ask, uh, Bill and Walter, what, what do you think about that?
I, I support moving forward. At our, at our last meeting, there was a lot more material presented and I was very impressed by the work of the committee and I think that they've worked hard on this. And I think that, um, it's responding to a need that's been addressed to this board back in as early as July. And I think that we have a duty to do our, do our effort to consider it further and to not allow ourselves to get paralyzed in fear and bogged down by the minutia. This board by moving forward tonight isn't committing to putting something before the town meeting. We're committing to have further discussion about it and to work on the details. And I think the subcommittee has done, um, a lot of hard work and I think we should respect the process and we should support it. I think the town has brought it to our attention, that this deserves attention, and I think we should move forward.
What do you think, Bill?
You know, a lot, a lot of good, um, opinions have been expressed today. I, I think, um, I'm very much on the fence on this article and, um, I, both Judy and Sarah have made, uh, very passionate points and I, I agree with them both. I think what I would support would be I think what I would support would be going forward for discussion, discussion purposes. However, I think ultimately, we should have the second dwelling proposal, maybe possibly, and this is a discussion down the road, maybe separate that and have that stand alone. Because I think that concept is going to be a highly debatable one at town meeting. So I like the idea of addressing the need, particularly with the two family in a single structure. Ultimately, I think the second dwelling proposal is going to draw a lot of debate at town meeting and it might be best to separate that down the road. But I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done. Ultimately, I don't know how I'm going to vote yet. I think Sarah's right, a lot of work needs to be done in this article, but I think it is a good discussion to have. So I would support going forward today, but I mean, as, as Mary made a point, we can tweak this down the road, we can withdraw it, we can do a lot here. And a lot of work is going to have to be done between now and before we present it to advisory. But those are just my preliminary thoughts.
Thanks. One question I would have, and I'd ask the committee if we could comment on it too, is in the approach where we walk before we run, does it make sense to move this forward if we separate out the unit in the primary residence and if we were to wait on the unit in the accessory dwelling, in the accessory building, sorry?
I think what Phil just said was that he thought that that was a possibility, but he thought we should just leave it together for now, have the discussion, and hold out that possibility.
What does the?
Eileen?
Exactly. I, we can't.
Okay.
I think that you're asking what we think as a committee and we'd have to have a committee meeting and talk about it to be able to say what we think as a committee.
That's fair, okay. All right. I guess I think that I'd be willing to move forward with, with the understanding that it requires further discussion and further vetting. But I think we need to be very specific as to the areas that we would, you know, a base, a base approach and then certain add alternates or certain alternatives. I'm not totally comfortable with the second unit in the second building of all the items, I mean, just in reading and going through all of the evolution of the conversation. But I, I think I would support going forward to take it to the next step.
With the bifurcated?
With the bifurcated. I would do the bifurcated one, not, not the original one. And then separate out, my recommendation should be separate out the housing and the accessory buildings as a separate series of discussions.
So it'd be three separate articles?
You could do two or you could do three?
We could just go with Gary's proposal tonight and then down the road.
Figure out which ones you wanted to.
Yeah, yeah. How's that sound? I mean, because you broke it up based on what the committee's proposing. And if we wanted to tweak it further, break it down to a third, if we can, maybe we can have the discussion later, but we can move forward. I like the way you kind of broke it down, start the meeting off.
Right, if you move the, move it forward bifurcated, you could further split up the one, but it would be within the same warrant article. You wouldn't be creating a third article. If you send two different articles up tonight, you have two different articles to work with and modify and add, delete, amend within that. And you've had articles like that before with multiple subsections. So that's what you would be looking at.
So is there any further discussion from folks in the, in the audience or board members on? Any related?
Well, I guess, yeah, we can talk about it later.
Okay.
I was going to add something to Mary's point, but.
Mr. Chair, in your draft articles, if those are the ones that are moving forward, you left out, if I'm looking at zoning article XX in the second line, it says, "To amend, insert," I would suggest that you should put in "or delete." Okay, and that would go for both of the warrant articles because you don't know yet how you want to change the language? So that would be a comment on the YY as well.
All right. Okay, so would someone want to make a motion?
The only question I have to choose really.
Sure.
We're voting to advance the conversation tonight, Mary, but we're ultimately going to take a more formal vote on whether we not support the substance and form of each specific article, right?
Right, you're setting up, although nobody likes the term, placeholders.
I don't think we've ever really had a situation where we've advanced an article and then a majority of us has voted against that article at the public hearing. I mean, that potentially could happen and it's withdrawn, is that right?
Correct. It could fail at public hearing. You could, your recommendation to advisory would be to not support it. You're better off withdrawing it. You're, you're better off withdrawing.
The legal process is, we propose it to the board of selectmen and they, why do we do that? So they, I know legally says we have to do it, but do they review them and give us feedback and send it back, but?
That triggers, according to state statutes, that's how we start the public hearing process.
Okay.
So you set it up to them, they stamp it, it comes down, we have to open the public hearing within sixty-five days. So you're setting up a placeholder saying, hey, we may amend, delete, or modify language within these articles. It takes a three majority vote to withdraw an article.
Sure.
So those are your choices, withdraw it or it wouldn't pass.
So what we're basically saying is, if it's an approval to move it forward, it's to get on that list. But clearly, all of the substantive issues remain to be discussed.
Well, and I think what goes on the list is just the language on this page, not the attachment.
Correct. It's the placeholder that's being.
So there's, there's nothing, I don't think, that would preclude the accessory dwelling unit study group from meeting again? Before the public hearing?
I would assume there'd be several meetings. I'd like to have the committee continue, if the committee's interested. I am assuming they are. I think they should be a participant in this as we go forward because they have brought an incredible amount of expertise to the discussion that, that the town would benefit from and that it would be very hard for us as individuals to recreate. So I would, I would ask that we involve the committee in all of the subsequent special hearing discussions and we could have some interim meetings to digest what, you know, what we've done tonight or what we're thinking of doing and then, and then moving forward.
Yeah, the study group is certainly need.
Yeah.
As long as we post it and you follow open meeting laws, the planning board will convene your public hearing process.
Right, absolutely.
And if the study group is attending that, we'll need to post that.
That's right.
But.
Okay. So I think that, I think I'd like to make a motion if we, have we satisfied the questions on the board?
I have a question about the language on the article XX that you distributed tonight. I understand the new section three A, one point eight eight. Is the new section five A three, what, is that part of the parking?
Five A three, the reason that was there is because with, with provision of an accessory dwelling unit, we'd also have to add the off-street parking requirements for the accessory dwelling unit. So I thought it was appropriate to include an additional section. Right now, section five A has one and two, but it doesn't have paragraph three. So I thought that would be a new section.
Okay, and then what is section? Five one.
Five one, the, in. Let me look on the bylaw.
Five one is this one, this new whole bylaw language. Do you see that?
Oh, I see. So it would explain that single line in the table of uses.
The table of uses is the one point eight eight.
Right.
Okay.
Now, just a point of clarification on the parking. Four point two, within the draft new bylaw, talks about parking and it says an accessory dwelling unit requires one space. If the planning board does not amend the off-street parking requirements, then that's the requirement. And if someone wants relief from that, whether they don't need any parking or they need more, that would require an A three. So you don't necessarily have to amend.
We don't have to amend five, section five?
You don't have to amend section five A.
But you're holding out the possibility.
But you certainly can. It's good to be broad.
I was just holding it out in case we needed to clarify that, because that is off-street parking, that section.
It's always better to have your placeholders be broad. You can always narrow them down. Once they go upstairs, if you determine during your public hearings that this affects another section of the bylaw, we can't then fold it in. And that's why these placeholders kind of reference a broad spectrum.
Okay, that was the intent. Yeah, because it just clarifies more, more of the requirement. All right. Okay, are there any other questions or suggestions or revisions? I guess then, I guess I'd make a motion that.
Wait, can I just say one thing?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I've just looked at that off-street parking requirements and it looks like we have the wrong number there. When you look at five A off-street parking requirements, A, one says introduction and then two is the list of requirements. Wouldn't, three is, what is, the existing five A three is parking dimension requirements. We wouldn't be changing the parking dimensions. We would be changing two, I believe, which is the list of uses indicating the requirement for each.
I was over here in five A, I was just adding a third.
No, turn the page.
Paragraph.
That is part of five A two. That is five A two.
Exactly, exactly. So in here.
And if you keep going, you'll see number three is, at the top of the next page.
Is the dimensional, right. What I was.
So I think you want five A two.
Yeah, I think you're right. Okay, we could change that. Yeah, five A two is the description, okay. All righty.
There is one more question. Can we get a, an answer? I'm so confused. If you have a four-bedroom grandfathered septic and you're building a new building out back and you're saying, okay, I'm going to give up two of the bedrooms in the house because I'm going to build two out there. Does that grandfather thing extend to that or do they have to pass a new title five?
I don't know the answer to that. I think I'd like to ask Bruce Catman that question.
Yeah, I think we need to do that.
Also on the number, I'm sorry, I was thinking about this. But the section five, the new section five one, it looks like our section five, which starts at the top of page seventy-seven, section five goes five A, one, two, three. Five B starts on, is called signs. So I'm not sure where five one.
It's I.
I?
Five I. It should have been here.
Okay, so that should be an I then.
Oh, so did we say five one?
Just want to make sure we sent language that we can.
Okay, so five I versus five one, okay. Okay, good proofreading. Anything else that you've, you've found? Keep going.
The last one. May include the inclusion of proposed new sections. Three A, one point eight eight.
The last section in the schedule of uses is three A, one point eight seven. And this would be a new section.
But we already, I'm sorry, so we, don't we already say that in, on line three and four? The provision of a proposed new section three dash A, one point eight eight.
We say that in the typical language of the warrant, of the zoning articles, typically there's a paragraph at the end that says such amendments may include these, these inclusions. It's a bit redundant, I agree, but in the other zoning bylaw sections, I've seen that included. It's basically stating clearly what the new sections are versus changed. It's redundant. I don't know if it needs to be there, but it's typically what I've seen in the other bylaws.
So then on that section, I, I think that new section five would have to be I also.
Five I, so five one. Yeah.
Okay.
So I think that gets the typos fixed. So what I would be suggesting is page seventeen, the bottom of page seventeen is three A, one, point eight, point seven, and so then on the, I'd add in that section on that page. Okay?
It would be part of the table of uses.
Absolutely. You would just be adding another section, another line to it.
We stop at one point eight seven.
Right, just add another one, that's all, in chronological order.
Yep.
If that makes sense. Okay. All righty, so are there other comments or clarifications or? I think I'd then make a motion that, that the planning board recommend that zoning articles XX and zoning articles X.
Wait, I haven't approved YY yet.
Oh, you haven't gone to YY, all right.
Have we agreed on, have we talked about YY enough to vote on it?
You know, I, I think, I was really more, I don't think we really have, that's a good point. I think that it's something, if we buy, I was just concerned about bifurcating them. So I was going to say that we could leave it separate. Maybe we just agree that it's a separate article.
Well, you're making a motion that we vote on this one, so I think that would, that would be the decision depending on how that vote went, don't you think?
I think I'm only suggesting it because in the language that was suggested during the week, we can, we included.
Right.
It was included. So I was just trying to make the distinction that it's no longer bundled together. But I guess if we just vote the one, it's assumed that this one's not included.
Well, correct. You're voting the specific language. I suggest you vote one at a time.
Yeah.
But if, if Ms. Sneath is saying that it's good to have the conversation about YY before you vote on them in their totality, that's the board's discretion.
No, no, I was just saying I didn't think we should vote them together. I didn't.
No, they were, they were basically separate. We split them, they were separate. So my sense is we could just vote on the XX and then it implies that that's a separate discussion.
Sure.
That, is that fair? That work for you guys? All right, I guess I'd make a motion then that we, that the planning board vote favorably to advance the zoning article XX as originally summarized this evening. Should I read it in its entirety? I think, I should just read into the record, okay?
Yes, please.
So zoning article XX, accessory dwelling units. Will the town amend the zoning bylaw of the town of Hingham adopted March tenth, nineteen forty-one? Is heretofore amended. To amend, insert, insert, or delete as applicable, certain provisions of the bylaw regulating the creation of a second dwelling unit on a single lot, including without limitation, the provision of a proposed new section three A, one point eight, point eight, accessory dwelling unit within or on the same lot as a single-family dwelling only and/or a new section five A two, accessory dwelling units, off-street parking requirements and/or a new section V, or five I, accessory dwelling units or act on anything related thereto. Such amendments may include the inclusion of proposed new sections three A, one point eight, point eight, accessory dwelling unit within the same lot as a single-family dwelling or, and/or a proposed new section five I, accessory dwelling units to provide flexibility in housing options under special permit conditions based on need. Is there a second or any discussion? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Oh, also, any opposed?
Um, yes, I'm opposed. But I will be an enthusiastic participant in the conversation.
Okay, thank you. So we have completed the discussion on item number one. The second possible zoning article is section three A, four point four, animal or veterinary hospitals.
Gary, excuse me, are you going to vote on YY tonight?
I thought we were just going to save it for discussion and not vote on it, isn't it?
So we're not.
Thanks, Camille.
Thank you, Camille. So we're not moving YY forward at all?
Well, originally, that's what I thought we would do, but since we hadn't discussed. Well, originally, that's what I thought we would do, but since we hadn't discussed it, I thought we were gonna discuss it first and then. We really discussed separating.
So are we gonna discuss it tonight? I know that.
Here's my, I'm gonna give you just one anecdote that I have, and I don't know if it affects anybody's feeling on this. I don't have a point of view on this one way or the other, except that I was sitting in the zoning board's office recently, and I thought I heard that the zoning board had an issue with, had an application that was affected by Section 3A 1.2, and they were concerned about the 1941 date. Do you know, Mary, if they're bringing an article forward on that?
I don't know if they are or not. I did, I do know that there was recently a case before them, and I believe that they determined that that section of the bylaw was something that they could not uphold. They feel that there's a flaw with that. And so I know that they have great interest in having a public discussion about that. We discussed this in July 14th at the planning board meeting. It did come up at the ADU study group. There's an interest in having a dialogue. I would also point out by, if you, if your ADU work triggers revisions that will affect your accessory uses or your accessory structures, now that you bifurcated them, if you don't bring these forward, you won't be able to comprehensively affect the change that you may determine that you want to make.
Well, I think there's a couple of thoughts. On the 3A 1.2, which is the pre-1941 exemption, I guess there are two concerns that I have with that. One is that the, in Chapter 48, when you read Section 6, Section 6 is very clear to make a clear distinction that subsequent zoning bylaws will not apply to buildings that are built prior to that bylaw. And they make that point very definitively. I'm concerned about the flip side of eliminating the 1941 exemption because the, I don't think that the people who voted for the enactment of the 1941 bylaw would have voted for it if their properties weren't exempt. But also, it's the issue of, should, should we be making a, should we take away that protection in the interest of allowing the protection to go to a newer dwelling? And so I'm, I'm not convinced that we have a problem with that section in the bylaw, because I don't think there's case law, I think there's opinion on it, but I don't think there's case law on it. So if we make an opinion on it, are we fundamentally acting as the judge and the jury when in fact it should be decided on case law? And I would, I'm not an attorney, but I would ask the attorneys for their opinion on that, but that's how I read it, I thought.
Well, do we have, I mean, I've heard rumors that there is some case law out there, that we have an opinion from the Attorney General's office. I haven't seen any of it.
I have forwarded it to the board, there was two cases, one from Falmouth.
It was a case directly addressed decision.
It's not case law, it's Attorney General's decision
Oh, an opinion, yeah.
on striking down a similar bylaw on Brookline and in Falmouth, where, but for the date of construction, these things are the same. And so it was a broader uniformity discussion. There's not one specifically on point with this particular discussion, but.
Well, it wouldn't have to be on point with 1941, but if it says the town of Brookline had one for 1965, and, and the AG's office opined that houses built in '64 need to be treated just like '67, or dates before and after those dates, then it'll be very analogous to our facts.
I mean, my sense is that if you were to change that requirement or that exemption in the bylaw, you would have to put in a similar set of controls to make sure that it's fair all across the board, that it wouldn't be a by right change. You know, in 1955, they changed it to a special permit authorization. It seems to me that if, if any building in the town is exempt from, from the, you know, if you take out the 1941 provision, what that says is that buildings of a certain age were exempt, but the modern buildings from 1941 to now are not exempt. So if you take the age out, now there's the issue of every building in the town can be converted to a two-family.
So I think that the question isn't for us to kind of judge tonight or come up with an answer to tonight. I think it's, given what you just said, that, that that is an issue. Like Mary said, there's towns where the judge has kind of ruled, or sort of said that that was not okay to distinguish between years. Wouldn't we want to have this conversation so that you could put those safeguards into place if you wanted to? Or we could choose to continue to ignore it because it's been there all this time, and really nothing is.
Well, this is currently before the zoning.
No, they actually determined that, well, I don't want to speak to, I don't want to speak to that. I will tell you that the zoning board did meet tonight. I asked Emily to have the zoning board authorize her to put forward a bylaw revision on uniformity in the event that the planning board opted not to, if that was the zoning board's concern, because certainly it's, it's within their purview if they have a problem with a section of the bylaw to bring something forward. And so I believe that they probably will have done that. So if the planning board isn't comfortable, I think the matter will be discussed. And then you would just be left with whether or not you want to have a substantive conversation about accessory structures and accessory uses.
Well, I think that, you know, as the two are lateral, lateral conditions, two, two-family, you know, two, it's really two buildings, two units on one lot, the two are lateral to that. It seems to me that if you were, you were to change one, you'd have to look at changing the other, because one is a loophole to the other if you don't. But my sense is, is that my concern would be just changing it to expand it in terms of date is gonna usher in a whole other set of unintended consequences that are gonna wanna be really vetted. And so the discussion would have to be a very detailed discussion. I think if it's, if, if there's currently an issue where there are conversions that are happening, or have happened, outside of the 1941 exemption, which clearly, clearly there are, and there are buildings that are being, that are in front of the building commissioner right now, that where the space and the number of rooms and the size on the plans, they're not a two-family, but they surely are a two-family by removing a wall or two. It seems to me that it would probably be better to have a set of proactive controls that address these unintended consequences than to let it sit as a set of loopholes. So maybe it does make sense under that. You know, we're being proactive about discussing the accessory dwelling units, maybe we should proactively discuss it. I don't think it's, I mean, the planning board's role is to essentially sponsor bylaw revisions. The zoning board's role is fundamentally to enforce the bylaw in a judicatory role.
The zoning board is authorized under Chapter 48, I wanna say Section 5 or 4, to bring forward, although they can bring it forward to the Board of Selectmen, but the planning board's role is to hold those public hearings and make a recommendation to town meeting. So once the zoning board moves something forward, it comes back to the planning board, that is certainly your purview. But they can, they can propose it.
I was really, where I was going with that was really more having a joint discussion between the two boards as to have, as to this proactive discussion, rather than having one board be the primary sponsor and another board.
Well, we will at the public hearing.
That's true.
Yeah, so if, if, what I suggest, if they're on it, they're dealing with, let them do it, and it will come back to us, and we can have that joint meeting. But i- if there, if there is an Attorney General opinion of another town's zoning bylaw that says you cannot distinguish within the dates, then our 41 provision is going down. So it would be incumbent upon us, I think, to address it. But let's, let's have them take it up, and it will come back to us, and we can have that joint meeting, and we can have a discussion for it.
Yeah, we have a public hearing.
Yeah, I mean, I, if you sent those to me, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't get a chance to look at them, but if you could send them again, that'd be great, yeah, thank you.
We, there's so many emails, it's easy to.
Right.
So then, in terms of this second zoning article YY, I would have numbered them, but we don't have numbers yet. The, perhaps what we should do then, if, if your suggestion is the zoning board's gonna move on both, perhaps then we should defer until we see what their proposal is. If you don't think we should be the.
Can I, can I ask you to look at 3J that describes accessory uses? Because I think to tie in, if you were to consider the XX that we just voted on, perhaps the best way to tie it in is to use some of the similarities that's used in 3J, in that they wouldn't over, that, I don't have any idea where this is going, but that, that we might wanna leave, take 3A 1.2 off of YY for the reasons Bill just said, but leave the other two there, understanding that we probably wouldn't have primary conversations about Article YY, but would do it if needed, depending on where the conversation goes with XX.
Also, the one distinction I'd make there, Judy, is that 3J deals with non-residential issues. And, you know, they're incidental, but they're really looking at commercial or office-type uses, if I have this correct. So what I was thinking is, is that, that's why I was thinking 3J would be separate. But if you look at 187, that's typically residential. And then A, 1A 2 is residential. They, so would you look at, I was suggesting 1A 2, sorry, 3A 1.2 and 3A 1.87, perhaps those are discussed as one or related.
Right, 3A 1.2 is the 1941 provision that Bill just talked about letting the, letting the ZBA make that, bring that article forward.
Right. But I was thinking that those two are related because they're residential buildings. You know, the, you know, if you take away the 1941 exemption, then you put a whole host of issues in play that are gonna impact 1.8.7 that weren't considered when 8, when 1.8.7 was written. So that's why I was thinking they're, you know, it's basically collateral to each other.
You may have to amend.
You'd have to amend 1.8.7 in the absence of 3A 1.2.
So maybe the board would consider moving YY forward, ultimately having a conversation with the zoning board, and then depending on the outcome of your conversations and the will of the board, maybe one of them gets withdrawn or modified, or, I mean, they don't have to be mutually exclusive?
Yeah, and I, I agree, I think the, I think that's a good idea. I would also say then that I'd almost include 3J too, because even though it's accessory uses, accessory buildings, and it's residential.
Nothing to talk about on the commercial, it talks about, I'm reading 3J right now. It talks about residential.
But it's basically.
Single-family, two-family.
But it's, it's, it's professional uses in residences, so in terms of the use, it was.
I don't know, it describes what is an accessory use. It kind of defines what are accessory uses. And to the extent that you're using the word accessory in zoning article XX, wouldn't we wanna hold out the possibility of changing this if it needs changing, depending on where XX goes?
Yeah, I think you could. And I think what I would do is I'd combine it in the discussion of 3A 1.2, 3A 187, and 3J.
I thought we were getting 3A 1.2 out of our discussion, though. We're gonna let the ZBA bring that.
Well, if we wanna let, I would say that if you wanna let them decide on whether it's changed or stays the same, yes, but I think the ramifications of deleting it, then combine these two. They could decide whether or not to keep it or delete it. I'm assuming if they don't have the AG's support, they'd probably delete it. On the other hand, once deleted, then the ramifications of that are, 187 and 3J need to be looked at. I think, independent of the accessory dwelling units.
I understand what you're saying, could we do that at that point, though?
Sure.
I mean, we don't have to do it tonight.
We don't have to decide it now, but I think we have the, we have the.
Like, for example, let's say the ZBA comes back to us, there's this need, and there's existing AG opinions from, from towns, and you can't distinguish, and then we agree with them.
If we.
Then we go to what you're saying, is that we now need to address it. Now, I, I know it's being reactive, and we like to be proactive, but there may not be a need to do that. Let's see what they have to say, and if we're convinced to, to, to strike the 41 provision.
So we could then, we could move to, move that discussion forward pending the ZBA's initiative.
What you're moving forward is a zoning article placeholder, which talks about, within the parameters of this article, these are the sections that might change, right?
And that's what this basically says, that's what this article says. It doesn't weight each or all of the three relative to the relationships. It just says that potentially all three would be discussed either in the same discussion or related. I mean, that's, it's kind of broad in that sense. My sense is it just lists the three, which is all we need to do now. And then let it fall as the zoning board makes the next move, then, then we decide what we do.
Well, what happens next is that the planning board or the zoning board send your articles upstairs. Then the planning board is compelled to open public hearings. And then at that point, you can have substantive dialogue about possible revisions.
And this, I think the language as described anticipates that. I mean, I don't think it precludes anything as written. It doesn't make any definitive position on either of the three or all of the three. It just says is that we open up the discussion on, on those, on the three. I don't know, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, what do you, what do you guys think?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. Okay, then. Further comments, or, Judy, are you, you set? You're good? All right, then I'd like to make a motion that on zoning article YY, accessory, housing and accessory buildings, that the planning board make a favorable recommendation to move this to the next step relative to discussion and public hearing. And the, the zoning article reads as follows. Will the town amend the zoning bylaw of the town of Hingham adopted March 10, 1941? As heretofore amended to amend, insert, or delete as applicable certain provisions of the bylaw regulating housing, accessory buildings, accessory uses under existing Sections 3A 1.8.7, Schedule of Uses-Residential, and 3J accessory uses, or act on anything related thereto. Such amendments may include the elimination or revision of Section 3A 1.2 to address concerns about uniformity and modifications to Sections 3A 1.8.7 buildings incidental to a single-family or two-family dwelling, and Section 3-J accessory uses. Existing provisions which may be amended include 3A 1.2, 3A 1.7, and 3J. Any further discussion? Second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we did XX, and were there any opposed? I should have asked, stand corrected. Okay, so that takes care of item one on our zoning articles. Item two is Section 3A 4.4, animal or veterinary hospitals.
I have a conflict, so I'll leave the one.
Okay, great, thanks, Walter. Okay, so on this section, the fundamental issue on this one is the issue of the current setbacks required per zoning, which are 40 feet?
No, it's, the issue is the special conditions imposed on animal-related uses within, let's see, it's on page 20, number 4.4, animal or veterinary hospital subject to special condition 1 of Section 3B. And Section 3B requires that there needs to be a minimum lot, the minimum lot size on which such use shall be permitted shall be two acres, and all buildings not used for residence shall be placed a minimum of 40 feet from the front side and rear lot lines. And that becomes problematic within the industrial park district because the minimum yard dimensions for front and side yards are 35 feet, not 40 feet. The minimum lots area is two acres, the rear yard is 50 feet. And so the conversation before you is that, given that it is an industrial park district that already has presumably not residential uses, more industrial-type uses, and has minimum lot sizes and yard setbacks that are appropriate for industrial and similar uses. that are appropriate for industrial and similar uses, for an animal or veterinary hospital within an industrial park, could the dimensional requirements be as stated in the table and not the special condition 3B, which adds that extra five feet? Because the industrial park, there's many lots are constructed, they're constructed to the 35 feet. So as you look to reuse of your industrial buildings, it starts to become problematic. Because there's, what's the hardship if someone wants to reoccupy an existing building? You know, you're automatically, you don't comply with this use. Correct. The, so the implications if this were to be changed, and, and the proposal is just to change the language right in that Section 4.4 where it says, "Animal or Veterinary Hospital Subject to Special Condition 1 of Section 3B, except when located in the industrial park." In the industrial park district, the dimensional requirements shall be as specified in Section 4A. And that, all that does is it says, it takes away that requirement for a 40-foot setback and it goes back to the 35-foot setback.
And this basically would apply to existing buildings, primarily existing buildings.
Correct, which are built to the 35-foot. It would require, it would apply to-
Everything.
Everything, new construction or existing.
Or impacted or existing.
So it would, if an animal or veterinary hospital is the type of use that would be appropriate in the industrial park, and if that might be something that would be beneficial as a reuse, making this change would eliminate that quandary with the setback.
And is this because of the working draft we had reviewed?
That this did come to our attention during that process, yes.
So on that-
This did not come from the applicant. I mean, from that person who was-
It didn't come from the person I've been talking with, their agent. But this has been in discussion ever since because they've been with the zoning board, trying to figure out how to resolve the matter. And, but this is not being proposed by them.
This is our article.
This is the planning board's article.
And by putting this forward, we wouldn't be committed to this specific language because the, the language going into the warrant doesn't, just talks about changing this Section 3A 4.4, right?
Correct. The placeholder is broader.
Right.
And perhaps I confused things by adding kind of the working draft. I just wanted the planning board to be aware of kind of where the conversation is. But the proposed zoning article actually references Section 3A 4.4, Schedule of Uses Commercial, Section 3B Special Conditions, and Section 6 Definitions.
So does, does this article address- That applicant's problem? It does. So it solves their problem?
It resolves the issue. Their issue is that they want to locate an existing building that has a 35-foot setback. And there's really no hardship, and it's a reuse.
Should this come from the ZBA too? Only be, only, my only, only reason why I raised it is that they were the ones, I think, who recommended it, right? That we should take this up or-
They didn't propose it. I did talk with Joe Fisher and told him that I was preparing something for you to consider to bring forward. So, and they actually have an active case in front of them right now, so I'm not sure if they should really be putting it forward. I think that after going through the regulations, looking at the history of animal-related uses in town, and thinking about the zoning premise of an industrial park, I mean, that's typically where you would put the uses that you may not choose to have right next to your single-family house, but you want to have, or you need to allow a place to happen, and where might that be?
I, I agree with you. Only concern with that, you know, we thought that marijuana and tattoos would be a good place up there too, and the people of the town didn't, they approved the marijuana article. But with the tattoos, it was a visceral reaction to our proposal. I don't think this will get that same reaction, because you know, it's a veterinary hospital, but-
So the use is allowed right now in-
It's, the issue is this five-foot difference in the setback.
I mean, it seems a little unprecedented that we're changing a zoning article, you know, for the, for the one use. One, I don't know. So I, I, yeah, I mean, I, it's just a bit odd. It's not usually a way we, you know, we, we see a problem and address a variety of ones, but we don't look at just one.
Well, we changed the zoning in the industrial park to allow athletic uses, I think it was, gyms.
Right, but that's a-
Because the ZBA had gotten a couple of applications for that.
It's not one application, one issue with one application, five feet.
Why wouldn't the zoning board just do, entertain a variance on it?
Well, I can't speak for the zoning board.
No hardship.
But if the planning board's not comfortable, certainly this is just merely a suggestion and it doesn't need to move forward, obviously.
Are veterinary uses allowed in the office park?
Animal or veterinary hospitals are allowed in limited industrial park, industrial park, industrial, office park, business B, business A, residence A, B, C, and D.
So what would the impact be on the office park? What, what's the current setback there? Would that by, by inference suggest a change there too? Or would it imply that if we do it in the industrial park, it would apply in the other districts?
The office, the office park setbacks are 50 feet, 50 feet, and 50 feet.
So they couldn't, so it's 10 feet more restrictive in the office park than it is in the industrial park?
It's-
For the setbacks, right? 50 versus 40?
Mm-hmm.
And then in the residential districts, if one was to do a veterinary, is this a clinic, a veterinary clinic basically?
It says Animal or Veterinary Hospital.
Hospital. So it's not a kennel, it's a, it's a clinic.
Remember, we reviewed it.
I remember this, I remember this.
The distinct, the distinction here is that the applicant is not going to kennel animals overnight. So we, when, we talked about, do we want to parse out a definition of animal clinic opposed to animal hospital? Where a clinic would be a day service with no overnight.
So in the, in the-
But I, but I think Sarah makes a good point. I mean, we're, we're going to change it in one, for one case? I don't know.
No, when you look at it in that context, I think I agree.
But is there an inconsistency that was highlighted by that one case that we should, that we should fix?
In the industrial park.
Yeah, so whether it was one case or two cases, if there's an inconsistency in our bylaw, why wouldn't we fix it? Or at least talk, we're not, we're not voting on this, but why wouldn't we talk about fixing it?
Right, I think if you were-
Am I more comfortable with that Judy, then, then?
Doing it for one-
Yeah.
Do the inconsistency is there, Mary?
If you were to discuss it at a public hearing, I suspect you'd have input from, you know, members of the public.
So, but let's talk again. Is this an inconsistency? Or is it just that they don't like the setback in that zone?
Special Condition 3 requires a minimum setback for this particular use of 40 feet.
So the use itself already, that's the controlling setback.
It's the use.
It's not the district, it's the use.
The use, animal or veterinary clinic, that use has a 40-foot setback.
Right.
In all districts.
Correct, minimum.
In, in all districts, but then districts, where the district setback is greater than that, which is the office park, for example, is 50 feet. So if you were to give them relief on the use, then they could come back and say precedent in the office park. Somebody wants to put a veterinary clinic in the office park. And they said, well, you know, on that use, you made an exemption to 35 feet in the industrial park. We have a use, so wouldn't it just automatically imply that it's, it's granted in that district too? If it's, if it's associated with the use?
Well, where I think the inconsistency isn't really, I, I don't have an animal even to speak of. So, so, but where I think the inconsistency is that the use is allowed in industrial park, and the setback in industrial park is 35. But then the use requires a 40-foot setback. So then why is it allowed in industrial park?
Where does it say a 40-foot setback?
That's the Special Condition 1 of Section 3B.
I thought that was at 50 feet.
I know, you were, it's actually-
I, I, I thought that was the case, because those were one of the arguments for the distillery.
48, is the minimum yard dimensions in industrial park?
On page 14, Sarah, is your 3B.
And so it says the minimum yard dimensions, the rear is 50 feet, but the side is 35.
So Special Condition 1 of Section 3B. The point that we're discussing, it says, "All business, all buildings not used for residence shall be placed a minimum of 40 feet from the front side and rear lot line."
But isn't that what we should be addressing?
So you could be addressing that section, which is called out.
What page is that, Mary?
That's page 14.
3B1.
3B1. Which is also referred to in the placeholder as a possible.
But when I look at page-
But how many, I mean, I said, the question is how many, you know, how many are in that category of being in the, allowed in the industrial park but have to have a 30-foot setback? How many, what kind of quidmire are we opening up?
It's the same thing applies to-
Any E2?
It's an A2.
So body art?
It applies to-
Farmer's market, no.
Well, Special Condition 1 of Section 3B. So that applies to the commercial breeding or boarding of animals solely in the industrial park.
So when I look at page 48, I look at the induc- industrial park district, the front setback is 35 feet, the side is 35 feet, but the rear yard is 50 feet. The rear yard in the industrial park is the same setback on all three sides in the office park. So if you were to grant this, this specific applicant wants to do 35 feet in a 50-foot require, area, 50-foot setback requirement, right?
I think they have, maybe do they have all of it but the-
Side yard? Is that the issue, Mary?
I thought the rear was the problem.
Or the rear?
But, no, the rear is 50 feet.
The rear's 50.
They have 50 feet?
They need 40 feet.
It's the side.
They need 40 feet, but the side of the front in industrial for the building, you only need 35. So now they're going into a building because it's an allowed use, but that use requires 40 feet and those buildings were built with 35.
How uncomfortable would it be for me with one, a five-foot requirement change for one use in one particular area? It just seems, I don't know. If we want to look at the setbacks in the industrial district.
As a general issue.
As a general issue.
Yes.
Yeah.
But not on a specific, you can't change a zoning for one applicant.
I just, yeah, I'm a little, I mean, I don't know. Do you guys agree?
I do agree. I do, yeah.
I mean, if, if, if it was several applicants and we wanted to address the bigger issue, it's good. But looking at one issue specifically, I don't know.
Okay, so what do we, do we want to?
I mean, do we want to look at industrial park setbacks?
Or no? It does, it does seem kind of strange that these, that these numbers are 35, 40, 50 in the industrial park, when really that's where, that's- So it complies in the office park but not in the industrial park. It just seems like a-
Right, and it's locked within a lot.
Yeah, yeah, it seems like our industrial park setbacks aren't quite-
Can we broaden the scope then of this at this point? We can, right?
You can't, now is the time to broaden it, before it goes upstairs.
If we look at 3B1, and we were to basically reconcile 3B1, and that's 40 feet, front yard and rear setbacks, reconcile 3B with, 3, Condition 1, with 4A Schedule of Dimensional Requirements, Industrial Park District.
And just don't mention the animal, because really maybe its other uses have-
Am I understanding this correctly, Judy? This is a, that the, that the industrial has setbacks in itself, the district.
In itself, 35, 35 and 50.
And then these are lots within that district that have already been, like, yes. So I think it is worth looking at. But right, I think we don't talk about-
With specific applicant.
Exactly.
So I think I change the wording to reconciling 3B Special Condition 1 with 4A Schedule of Dimensional Requirements, Industrial Park District setbacks.
So it would be certain, if you look at the language that you have here on zoning article, hashtag, hashtag. It would be-
Hashtag, something?
Hashtag, hashtag. We are so hip. As applicable, certain provisions of the bylaw regulating. So you wouldn't say animal or veterinary hospitals, you would say-
Regulated under?
Regulated under Section 3B Special Condition 1, which- Basically says that all buildings not used for residential use shall have a 40-foot setback from the front side and rear lot lines.
No, because only the ones where Special Condition 3B1 applies in that table of uses.
So not every use is a, so I think what we would do is just look at, review the uses that are affected by 3B1 and, and change any one of them accordingly. I don't know.
So where does, where does 3B1 get referenced in here?
In the table, Section 3A, the table of uses.
3A table of, so it's not, it's not, it's not referenced in 4A? It's only referenced in 3A?
Correct, but if you're looking to reconcile the dimensional requirements for a zoning district with the Special Condition 1 of Section 3B and the Schedule of Uses, because Gary, to your question, if you look on page 20, number 4.4.
I'm trying to find where the Special Condition is referenced. I didn't see it.
Look at 4.4.
So, so Subject to Special Condition 1 of Section 3B, that's where-
So we'd have to refer to 3A within your article.
So it's, you'd have to refer to 3A and you'd also basically expect that it's an animal or veterinary hospital use.
Well, you just say 3A.
4.7 is also affected by that.
Yeah, there's more than one.
But the, but I don't know that we can write this on the fly right now, to tell you the truth.
Is this something the board would want to work on and perhaps get ready for next year's meeting?
We're not meeting again before December 1st?
You're not, so it's, it's now or never if it's for this town meeting.
My sense is that I'd wait because I don't think it's that pressing.
Well, it obviously is for the applicant who can't build a veterinary hospital.
That's true.
But, it's generally not how we work, but, I mean, it does, I'm looking through these.
What other areas would be affected by that 3B1?
Is it any place in the industrial park?
Riding, stable.
Automotive agricultural uses.
Commercial?
Commercial breeding or boarding of animals.
Would they, would they hit up against the same issue?
The commercial breeding would, yes. Special Condition 1 of Section 3B. In the industrial park, if they were occupying an existing building that was built to the 35-foot as required within the industrial park?
So these spaces would not be able to-
It's basically animal uses. There aren't any other issues that are subject to Special Condition 1.
Right, but that's in commercial. What if we look at others?
Right, I mean, that's why I was questioning office park, because office park is 50, 50, 50, rather than a 40-foot setback. It's more restrictive.
So-
So if you did this in the industrial park, would it by inference imply-
If you did it in the office park, it's okay, but you can't do it in the industrial.
Well, in office park, the setback is more restrictive. It's 50 feet.
Right, so they would meet the Special Condition 1 because it'd be mandated to meet the 50. So they have the 40, so they wouldn't have a problem.
Right, because the building would be built.
The building would be built.
So the building is in excess of the setback already by the 50 feet, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I don't know, I mean, we could discuss it. I mean, there's a lot of other things that are, I just look at the amount of time we have and I, I'm just wondering how we're going to discuss half the stuff we'd like to discuss, so my sense would be-
How many articles do we have?
I can't see the question before we go down. The planning board has four.
Section 3.
I think the zoning board is putting forward two or three, and you may get some citizen petitions.
Four has never been a big number for us, but-
And number four is not going to be, and, well, and number four is not going to be a real big-
Is that the local preference issue?
Yeah, as a good point.
If we're done with the animal one, should I bring Walter back in?
We're not quite done.
I don't think we're done with, we didn't decide yet on 3A. So you were, Sarah, you were saying 3A 4.4?
No, I just, I, I had 4.4 now. I can't, I can't.
I know, I can't.
I'm getting tired, I guess.
I mean, I know it's important to the applicant. I'm just thinking in terms of reality, that's a meeting, half a meeting to discuss this. And we've got six, seven articles.
a meeting, half a meeting to discuss this, and we've got six, seven articles to discuss in two months, and, and I know two of them are gonna.
Articles in a town meeting, I mean, I don't, I think fo- four is kind of a light number for us, but.
One of them's gonna be very.
One of them's gonna be a heavy discussion.
Maybe, at the most far.
And the other one we haven't discussed yet, which is going to be an equally heavy discussion.
Which one?
I think the second one, the Y Y one's going to be a big one too, in terms of discussion. X X and Y Y, both of those are going to take two or three meetings. So we've got six meetings.
Okay, could we just focus instead of all the time, is, is there something that we'd like to change here?
I'm, I'm just, I'm thinking if you change it just for one applicant, it doesn't seem to make sense, but is, is the forty-foot onerous, is, would it be better to have it thirty-five if we did it as a district setback?
We could certainly review that, the suggestion is, is that your industrial park setbacks are thirty-five feet, and so if uses require greater than thirty-five feet, then maybe that means that those buildings aren't buildings where that use should locate.
That's right, and go into other buildings in the industrial park that are forty feet.
I mean, that's, that's what the end result is, and maybe that's okay, I mean, that's ultimately the theory of setbacks.
Wait, so where are the setbacks laid out in the industrial district, can you remind me?
Page forty-eight.
Page forty-eight.
I mean, that's what setbacks are for.
Can we look at it only for commercial? Is that what I thought is, if we're gonna?
The uses that.
Schedules of uses, commercial, so look at section.
Four entirely.
So you.
Or page.
Section three A four, schedule of uses, commercial, in conjunction with section three B, special condition one, and section four A, schedule of dimensional requirements.
I was thinking of three A, schedule of uses.
And which I have.
Yes, yeah, can't.
Commercial, commercial, page nineteen to twenty-two.
So that's three A, section four.
Three A, section four.
Yeah, I mean, is that what we want to look at, because that, in, in the industrial park, commercial in the industrial park, that's.
That's what it is.
Animal, vet, commercial breeding.
Right.
Sit-down restaurant, fast food takeout, drive-up teller, we're getting into some.
Look at the commercial uses allowed in the industrial park.
By permit or by spe- by, allowed or by special permit, right, by, right, or by special permit in industrial park, look at the setbacks of those uses.
We can phrase like, would the town amend the zoning bylaw to expand the existing setbacks in the industrial park for commercial uses, how's that?
To review and possibly expand.
You may choose to collapse them.
Sure, in terms of that.
It's all, it's all an A two special permit.
So we're looking at the setbacks for.
Okay, so.
Section four, commercial uses allowed.
Three A, section four.
Or maybe not even allowed, for, uh, commercial uses and, we're looking at setbacks for commercial uses in the industrial park.
In industrial park.
And that may affect sections four.
Four A.
Three A four, not four, yeah, three A, section three A four.
Yeah.
Instead of four point four, right?
Right, and then section four with.
Four point four, four point five?
Just section four, right, three.
If you say section four, that's the commercial uses.
Right, that's what I thought we were doing.
The only two reference to those two animal uses.
Right, and section, and we'd have to refer to section three B, although we'd, we'd say setbacks, but it might also affect section three B, right?
Three B, and then this, section four A, schedule of dimensional requirements. You may ultimately decide that this is what you want to change here.
Right, what.
I mean, we don't know yet until we lay out the details and you consider it.
I think, I think that's, I think that's the, um, the course of action we pursue.
Okay, so I have, um, the, the language, the template language, will the town amend the zoning bylaw, uh, town of Hingham adopted March ten nineteen forty-one, is heretofore amended to amend, insert, or delete as applicable, um.
Certain provisions of the bylaw.
Certain provisions of the bylaw.
Regulating commercial uses.
Regulating.
Under section three A.
Commercial.
Correct, on anything related there to such amendments may include the modification of condit- special condition one of section three B to these uses in the industrial park, and/or the inclusion of a definition for said uses. Existing provisions which may be amended include section three A, four point zero, section three B, special conditions, but, and section six, but what about this section four A?
You'd want to add four A.
Yeah.
And do you want to leave the definitions in there or take them out?
I don't.
I don't know that you need them.
I don't think we need them.
Yeah, so section four A.
You will have Susan look at this before it goes anywhere.
Um, I'll certainly send it to her, I know she's on a plane tomorrow, but, eh, she can do it, she loves this stuff.
Reachable by cell on the plane, right? Okay, so do, is that our motion, are we making a motion here, Judy, or?
Yes, I made the motion.
You made it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Okay, excellent, so we have, we could ask for Walter, if you could, um, and then Billy, the next one's yours.
Do you want your, do you want your parking determinations?
Yeah.
I heard that the zoning board went to one fifteen the other day, so.
No, one fifteen AM.
Yeah.
What, what about bed and, bed and breakfast, Gary?
I think the bed and breakfast one was the zoning board.
Okay, okay, all right, so.
I don't seem to have that one, do I?
No, it's not on the new list.
No.
No, I think the zoning board feels.
Is either going to advance it or not. It's a uniformity matter.
So it's really the local preference around, is that what that one's about?
It's the nineteen forty-one date of.
Oh, it's the nineteen forty-one, okay.
Okay, so on the, on the next one, um, I recommended to Mary that we talk about, talk about this, and Mary was kind enough to draft up the placeholder language, and what I, um.
Which one is it?
This was, uh, special permit A three parking determinations, and the reason why I, um, this came about is because last year when I was chairing, we would go through the criteria of, you know, what does an applicant need to do, and what's our, what are our left and right limits for regulating applications. On page nine spells out site plan review in, in a nice, a night, nice neat itemized fashion. With respect to A three determinations, we just make a finding that is adequate parking, but we don't actually lay out what actually is adequate parking. So if you go to the existing bylaw, special permit A three are discussed on page eleven and page five, if you go to page five, it's I through F two through A through G, but Mary and I were talking last year, I said, well, you know, it would be nice if the board and the applicant had specified criteria that we can go by, so the applicant knows what they need to satisfy, and the board has a checklist similar to page nine SPR, where we can go through line item by line item and say, okay, do they meet the requirements for the, for the, under the bylaw, um, and I think it'd be easier to do it rather than us making a findings and us agreeing, hey, adequate parking exists, is there a second? So that's the reason for it, and Mary, um, so Mary drafted proposed language, I'm going to work with her more on the minutia as we go forward, but I do think there's a need there, and I think it would be good, as I said earlier, for both applicants and for the board, to have specified itemized criteria to determine what exactly is necessary for an A three.
So Bill, in this, in the language here that's highlighted in red, you've, you've, you have a new paragraph here which is six, at the last page, and does that basically, compensate for, or, um, I don't know if that's the right word, but does that deal with the deletions that you've taken in four A and, I was curious as to the deletions in four A and, and the dimensional requirements, which both talk about granting of relief? I was just trying to understand the deletions, that's all.
Do you want to address that, Mary, can Mary just one?
Save for that, um, if you read through the off-street parking requirements, it talks about, um, in four A one, that first deletion, it talks about how you can grant a special permit A three, uh, if you make a finding that it's impractical to meet these standards, and a waiver will not worsen, uh, parking and traffic problems onsite or on the surrounding streets, and that's moved back under six approval criteria, because that's really like a parameter.
That's our current, that's, that's what exists today for what Bill would like to see further and describe.
But it's up front, though, it's not clear.
And to dive a little deeper, if you go to, you know, when I was prepping for the meeting as the chairman, and I'd go to Mary and say, hey, okay, I want, I want to lay out for the board what we need to meet, what we need to meet to issue a special permit A three, and Mary would say, okay, go to page eleven, which I would do, and then you'd go I, I through F two A through G, and then you'd go there, and it's basically the same requirements as the ZBA user determined, uh, when, when, so it, it, and it really isn't applicable to parking.
What I think too of that is that, um.
It's on page five.
In the olden days, parking determinations weren't A threes, they were A twos, and then they got switched to A threes with the F R Ds, but the pointer for your approval criteria never really got switched, so you still have the special permit A two criteria, but you have an A three, and really parking's kind of different than an A two, I mean, so it makes sense for the board to think about what findings you want to make and really spell them out, it will help the applicant, will help the board.
So.
Sounds like a good idea, I mean.
Yeah, so you've added that, this, you've consolidated these requirements into one separate paragraph six.
As the approval criteria.
As the approval, which is more clear.
Yeah.
I like that, okay.
Any, any suggestions to the board would be great.
Yeah, I was only thinking of an, of how this is. Where this would go or how it fits in, but, you know, sort of the issue we had with the light plant where they were satisfying the, you know, uh, number of, of parking places that they need to have based on square footage, but it seemed excessive for their use, and so then we, you know, had them, you know, they have a place where they can put, uh, that parking if, if need be down the road, I don't know if there's anything we can put in there about if the board determines that the parking requirement is, um, not necessary for this particular application, um, I mean, I think you have to have the place where they can put it, you have to have a plan in case we're wrong, but I think the whole idea of excessive parking, um, I mean, I think a lot of times we have more parking than we need, I mean, then there's the Derby Street shops, which I couldn't even find a space the other day, and I thought, yeah, it's not even Thanksgiving yet, usually I don't go there from Thanksgiving to Christmas, because, uh, it can be pretty crowded, but, um, so anyway, I think that, um, you don't want to have too much, and a lot of times there's too much in, in the general year there at Derby Street, so I don't want to imply that they don't have enough parking, because they do.
So we'll look at some language about encouraging, uh, folks to look to design but not build, to not build for the holiday rush, don't build for Black Friday. We can look at some language.
And the only, only suggestion I would have would be, Mary and I were discussing about, um, the possibility of, um, creating a minor mod, uh, provision to an A three, but we've learned that we can't do that on an A three, so I would strike that from the proposed language. In a minor, in the sense, uh, for an A three, in the sense that, let's say you had an applicant, uh, we've granted an A three, and their parking was not going to change, but they were going to move spaces around, um, what we were talking about, Mary would just come to the board and, and formally say, this is what they want to do, will you guys waive it, we don't have to go through, but we learned we can't do that, so we'll strike that from.
Well, thank you, Bill.
If you, if you have an application where you think they may shift something around, the board could put into your decision any flexibility, if you wanted to say the applicant could make minor changes working with staff or something, we just can't do it in the bylaw, so if you think on a case-by-case basis that you need to build in some flexibility, it would be in the decision, we'd want to talk about that.
Is there a, um, sort of a, uh, re-review on, under the approval criteria if, you know, the conditions that are the basis of the approval for a special permit, let's say in practicality or relief is consistent with the intent, but it won't increase the likelihood of congestion or accidents, if, is there a look-back provision where, you know, a project gets permitted and then all of a sudden one of these conditions isn't?
My understanding with look-back provisions, we would, we would enter that into our decision.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be an automatic one, it would be a case-by-case basis.
All right, so, uh, any further discussion on this one?
No.
Um, Bill, would you want to?
I'm making motion to react favorably, um, on the bylaw review to, uh, change special permit A three parking determination approval, uh, criteria language.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent, so what's our next one is, uh, affordable housing, and this is.
There's a revised one in front of you.
Probably a more appropriate title would be the F R D multi-unit housing modifications, and this essentially, um, follows on the one from last year that changes the language on local preference to, um, make it more in line with, um, law, current law, so it softens some of that language, and the placeholder also, um, again, it's very broad, and, um, I printed out both sections for you, although there's not a great deal of changes, and the F R D, um, on the third page, number five, uh, I'm suggesting, and the board doesn't have to decide tonight, but I'm suggesting that you may want to, um, add in a P E into that, right now it's, the bylaw says that, um.
Under, under five, uh, se- uh, section three, instead of and/or, I think I'd, I'd say, um, and.
Right, and again, this language isn't going up for the, you know, you'll be, if. I'm just want the board to understand the, uh, if you flip two more pages.
Oh, yeah.
It's the, um, that's the, instead of having these parameters for local preference, it's been, um, suggested that we just say, to the extent permitted by applicable law, preference shall be given in the sale of, sale or rental of low and moderate income housing units, um.
So if we kept that in general, wouldn't we take out D H C D on the, on the article language?
I don't think that the D H C D is a problem, but we can certainly look at that more under, you know, the public hearing process.
Write the laws, right?
They don't write the laws, but they do certainly decide if our lower moderate income housing can be counted on the inventory, so to the extent that they have suggested procedures.
Yeah.
We should, if we want our units to count.
No, I understand that, I'm just thinking that the language on, on the cover sheet implies that they're the arbiter when, or that, you know, if we just say local law or, uh, applicable law, we're fine, but they're not the. They're advising, I'd strike D H C D.
Just put in conflict with applicable state law.
That's what I.
Or state policy.
That's what I would say.
Instead of D, D H C D, applicable state policy.
That's fine.
Okay. So this is a, sort of a housekeeping one that came from town council?
Yeah, this follows up on the one last year.
And it's, and really, if you look at the, I kind of wrote the placeholders broadly because there's affordable housing provisions in both of these sections.
Last year we changed some of it, but we still. Still not quite right?
We're not quite right, it, this is more of a housekeeping one, it does come from council as a suggestion, um. And the last page, the residential multifamily has different language on affordable than the F R D, one is more awkward than the other, um, so we may.
Again, not being specific on that last page and being general.
Yeah.
About light state, the local law.
Well, we certainly want our units to count when they're built. So yes, you're right, Sarah, I would call that more of a housekeeping article.
Okay, I, I move that we, uh, vote this one forward for consideration.
And the language would be as, as revised?
As revised.
Well, and we'll continue to work on it.
And continue.
We have problems.
Yeah.
The placeholder language.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's fine, that's fine.
The placeholder language as revised, yes.
Okay, in a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I said what kind it was, the multi-unit housing modifications.
Ah, okay, the title is key.
Yeah, that's, it's less inflammatory.
Aye. I voted aye on that.
Okay, great, so now we're, we're set on our, uh. Okay, great. So now we're, we're set on our, uh, agenda business, and then we have new businesses, administrative reports?
I have nothing tonight, especially given the time. I just thought I'd start carrying that...
I do have something we should do for no- new business. I think we should formally invite Karen Clancy to our next meeting, set for a five-minute presentation at seven o'clock.
Yes, I would very much...
Is that ready to go?
I'd very much like that. I'm looking for an opportunity to give her our token of appreciation from the board.
We could do it.
I haven't had a chance to schedule that.
We could do it at seven, maybe, so she...
Let's do that. So December seventh?
Because if she sits at the whole meeting, she might get PTSD, so...
You wouldn't want to...
We'll have audio, we'll have her audio by seven oh five.
The next meeting is December first, but we just discussed canceling that, so the meeting after that would be December eighth?
December eighth.
Yeah. And I have the, um...
Thank you.
I got her. Thank you.
Thank you, you too. Have a great Thanksgiving.
Thanks, Kevin.
Good Thanksgiving.
And I have the piece. I'll send you all around an email.
Sign, print, sign, thank you.
I found a very nice commemorative poster of Hingham, and, uh...
Let us know how much we owe you.
I will send you a little email on the tally and the contribution if I could.
Oh, yeah.
It was a wonderful poster of, done in the Terson, Tersentenary of, and it was done for the Girl Scouts.
Was the, um, four, just, I have two quick things. I know everyone's buzzing out of here.
We have the November seventeenth meeting. If you want, I can hold those till December eighth, those minutes. We didn't act on, and I just wanted to, um, I put out a suggested schedule of planning board meetings. Um, I know it seems aggressive. We could cancel meetings at your discretion, but I think it's safer to book the rooms. And then I would arrange for H cam for the evenings. We're going to do bylaw stuff, if that's okay with you.
Okay, let me see the list here, if I can reach it.
After town meeting, I tried to go back to you.
I tried to get it all in one line, Bill, but Dick can read it.
Are we going to assign zoning articles tonight, or will we do that at our next meeting?
I think you should wait until we find out how many we have.
Yeah, I agree.
Oh, right, we don't, we have to get the ones from the other department.
Right, okay.
You could have citizen petitions as well.
Are there any, um, any in the mix? Didn't know of, or? Yeah? That's an interesting look. Uh-oh.
So March is a...
Carrie knows of some, she's just not talking.
You know, it's not, nothing's official until it's official.
Right.
It will be official December first.
Okay.
So as soon as, I mean, you know, people say things all the time. It's, and once, they have to be submitted, so, how's that?
Carrie, I over, the system turned off, they'll keep down and now it's freezing, so I don't know if we can figure out how to get it back up, but it might be ten degrees in here when you get in in the morning.
Leave it down here, we're all awake now.
Motion to, uh...
A motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Everybody have a good Thanksgiving.
What would you like? Did I...